Testing, testing, one, two, three. Volume check, volume check.
We can hear you loud and clear, Councillor Zelka. Thank you. Councillor Braithwaite, are you online as well?
Yes.
Okay. You're gonna have to speak up just a touch. And, um... We have staff running around doing a set of things. Can I call the meeting to order here and we'll, um...
Yeah.
Okay. It's pretty straightforward, but time is now six o'clock. It is, uh... Welcome already to a special committee of the whole with a single item agenda. We're meeting here and, uh, two councillors remotely on the traditional territories of the coast and straight Salish people, specifically the Coindin speaking people known today as the Songhees and the Isqaiamal First Nations, and we recognize that their connections to these lands continue to this day. Of course, this is being livestreamed, and we expect a number of people to call in tonight to join us. Um, and it will be available for future viewing on the municipal website. Um, thank you everybody for coming in person or remotely, and, uh, just wanna... We have a single item agenda, excluding the adjournment motion, um, which is to try and, uh, finalize our, uh, our structure for the Heritage Commission and, uh, Foundation, and how we can work this into our overarching, um, framework. Um, Joanna, I think I'm just gonna hand it over to you to do a presentation, is that correct? And we will, uh, we will move it, uh, forward from there. That's for you. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's a pleasure to be here. So, um, I've been, um, asked to facilitate your workshop this evening, and the, um, the idea of the workshop, um, if you can... We have, um, we have Vanna over near behind, so yes. Um, the objective of the workshop, um, is, as I understand it, is to determine an appropriate role and mandate of council's heritage commission that will support council priorities and the business of the district, but does not overlap with the Heritage Foundation, provides a meaningful role for the commission volunteers, and a return on their investment of time and knowledge. So that's the objective of tonight's workshop. Is there any other subjective to that, or anything else anybody would have to add before we get into discussion?
No, I can leave.
Cool. Thank you. Moving right along. So the workshop outline, introduction, the objectives, um, some... First, I wanna have... We wanna have a discussion about some things that I think we could all, I hope, agree on, that would become a baseline, and then move on to some broader, bigger questions. Then have a discussion about some of the input that we've received that I've heard...
Participant exiting.
Eric Zelka. Now, please stop for a moment, and we'll, uh, we'll just bring this up in a second.
Welcome back, Councillors Zelka. We're just gonna try and fix an audio glitch we have here at the same time, and, uh...
That's great, thank you.
I think it's fixed. I'm just gonna go back, and if somebody can just talk for a minute, and then I will text Selena when I get back. Sorry for the interruption.
That's good, thanks for that.
Oh, so it's the camera, it's covering the table, that's all, covering the visual of council. We can lower it, I, I think.
Yeah.
It might be at its lowest, isn't it?
It should have a...
Yeah, no, it's at its lowest. I think it's at its lowest.
So it's... It's... That's blocking the view from the camera, is that right?
Yes.
I'll go take a look, so I can actually see where we're moving.
I think... If you could just move it maybe to that direction, towards the door, and that would just get it out of the line of sight of the...
Exactly, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so the sound is working.
Can you see the camera from there, Councillor Neay? Can you see the camera? Are you in... Okay. So you should be... We should all be in view then?
Yep.
Okay. Our audio issues are resolved, and we're... We're good to go. All right, I apologize. So Ms. Winter, would you just mind, uh, just starting from the beginning again, and just so for the... For the, uh, benefit of those at home.
I'm about to leave.
You may remove the mask now that you're seated in our own place. Thank you.
So much to think of. Thank you, Your Worship. So, we started with a review of the objectives for the workshop tonight, and, um, just want... Just... We'll review that again. Um, the... The objective of tonight's meeting and workshop, of which I'm honored to facilitate, is to determine an appropriate role and mandate for council's heritage commission that supports council priorities and the business of the district, does not overlap with the Heritage Foundation, provides a meaningful role for volunteers, and a return on their investment of time and knowledge. And I asked if there was anything else, and nobody had anything else to add to that.
Okay, thank you.
Did Councillor Zelka rejoin?
He did. Councillor Zelka's with us. I'll just make the ask of the... Of Councillor Zelka and Councillor Braithwaite, if you do wanna, uh, speak up, please just speak up, and, uh, it's a... We are a committee of the whole, so it's a less formal piece here, so if there's questions, just kind of make a clearing your voice sound, or speak up, and we'll, uh, we'll allow for those as we go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Participant exiting. Councillor Braithwaite.
I think someone bumped their... Someone bumped their off button.
Um, so... So the... The outline, um, of how this evening will go, um, the introduction, the objective, um, some discussion on some fundamental principles that, um, I hope we can all agree on, because it'll lay the foundation for the rest of the discussions, some broad, what I call, big questions, um, a discussion about some things that we've heard, and... And solutions to things that we've heard. And speaking of that, um, I had the opportunity to speak to some members of council, as well as the chairs of the Heritage... Current Heritage Commission and the Heritage Foundation, and of course, have reviewed the public correspondence that council has been receiving over the last several weeks on this matter. Um, and tried to distill it, so that we can have some discussion on that.
Announcing participant, Hazel.
Welcome back, Councillor Braithwaite.
Then we'll switch things around a little bit. Council will come to a conclusion, and that's where council has an opportunity to provide some direction to staff for next steps, and then there's... Will be a pub... The public input period, if that's acceptable for that format.
Very good, keep going, thank you.
Okay, let's... How did we get here? Um, in 2018, council commissioned a review of the, um, your commission and committee structure with the purpose to ensure that the structure and operation of the council committees and commissions reflects the effective governance and the efficient use of the time and efforts of its volunteer community members and staff. And so that review looked at all, um, district committees and commissions, including the Heritage Commission, and, to a lesser extent, the Heritage Foundation. Um, and one of the things that came out of that was some confusion of role and mandate between the commission and the foundation, and some lack of clarity amongst, um, council members perhaps, and certainly the volunteers on the... On the two, um, organizations. So in 2019, council directed staff to review the terms of reference and bylaws of the commissions and committees, and update them as required to reflect the recommendations from that review. And of course, this... Earlier this fall, um, council looked at all of those bylaws and found... And decided that you wanted more time to consider the mandate of the Heritage Commission, and then its related establishing bylaw, and that brings us to tonight. So here we are. I just wanna do a quick summary. I know you've all seen this diagram, um, so many times, but it's a really great summary of the... The factors that... That come into council's decision-making, and you can receive information from a variety of sources, um, members of the public, your staff, um, the overarching legislation and governance regulations, existing plans and policies, plans and policies that you develop, and your advisory bodies. So advisory bodies are key, but they're not the only source of input into your decision-making process. Okay, so let's take a look at some fundamentals. Um, I probably will move around a bit, because I'll probably be writing some things on the flip chart shortly. Anybody have anything to say about the introduction and that before we move forward? No? Okay. No one on the phone either? Okay, great. So let's look at the... These fundamentals, these underpinning principles, um, that I... I think we should all be able to agree on, but let's talk about them. So the first one, heritage has immense value in Oak Bay. No... No. Um, advisory bodies play a valuable role in helping council make decisions and implement its priorities, just as the diagram just said. Um, council values and needs community input. So advisory bodies, like the Heritage Commission, are a very important vehicle for getting that kind of input. Council doesn't expect its commissions to operate in actual service on behalf of the district. If anyone...
Councillor Green.
Councillor Green.
Just describing what you...
Can you use your microphone, please?
Uh, there we go. I'm sorry, um, would you mind describing, just for, you know, for public awareness as well, what you mean by an actual district service?
Sure. Thank you. Sure, thank you. Um, and anyone, it's free to jump in here, too. Um, so for example, before, um, in... In early days, there were Parks and Recreation Commissions that actually ran recreation facilities in a number of communities, for example, and as local governments have grown, um, they have hired professional staff to then manage the facilities. So a commission council, under the legislation, has the ability to delegate authority to a commission to provide a service. Um, we still see services offered in regional districts, say in the smaller, um, electoral areas of regional districts, where there might be... A commission might be running a service that's very specific to that area, whether it's a park service, for example, or something like that.
Please continue, Ms. Winter.
Thank you. Um, just make sure I've gotten my...
Go ahead, Councillor Patterson, you had a question?
Just to go back to that, I think perhaps, um, it... It would be useful to clarify that the Foundation, in a way, does act... Does operate in actual district service, and they, in fact, because they distribute the grant monies for... For heritage homes that apply for... For assistance with grants to, um, uh, preserve and conserve the heritage aspects of the home. So I think in that way, the Heritage Foundation does actually, um, operating as a society, does actually provide a district service, I believe.
It doesn't... It doesn't counteract the comment here that commissions aren't doing that, but, uh, um, it's an interesting comment in terms of the... They do do that on behalf, so is it a service or not is a good question.
And...
Ms. Williams?
Uh, hi, thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to add to what Joanna had said, uh, and to Councillor Patterson's question. The... The Foundation is a registered society that raises funds and then uses those funds to provide grants to, um, heritage homes in Oak Bay, and while that's a service to the community, that the council of the day found very valuable, and really supported that entity in its establishment, it's not an Oak Bay service, a District of Oak Bay service? Does that help clarify?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, that's useful, just so that we... We anchor that right at the start.
And we will have some opportunity to have further discussion about the role of the Foundation later on this evening as well, too. I hope that we'll have some good discussion there. So, um, the Heritage Commission is an advisory body to council, providing important input and recommendations that support your decision-making and... And your priorities. The Heritage Foundation provides an important... The Heritage Foundation provides an important focus on heritage awareness and education in the community. And council, staff, and advisory bodies all operate within the district framework and follow appropriate processes to ensure transparency and consistency. So you're all bound by the appropriate legislation, regulations, and, um, policies and procedures of the district. Any discussion on any of those fundamentals before we move on?
I think we're good, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the big questions. So the first one that I wanted to ask council is, what do you believe is the Heritage Commission's most important function? How can the Heritage Commission help you achieve your priorities and carry out your work? So, jump in. As I go to the flip chart.
We're gonna workshop this.
We're gonna workshop this, yeah. Okay?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Winter, and, uh, I'll go around to the table here if there's anybody who wishes to, uh, just to, uh, jump in. I would certainly say that, um, advice on heritage values for heritage applications is, uh, top of mind. I guess, advice on heritage applications, to simplify that. Are there other expectations here of this, uh, this body in terms of the, uh... Go ahead, Councillor Patterson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, Mayor, and I guess just to build on that, I think one of the most important services that they have provided, and their knowledge and expertise contributes to, is, um, in fact, in documenting statements of significance, uh, perhaps not as much lately for some of the, um, residences, but certainly for other aspects, um, around the... Of, um, things like green spaces and... And some of the heritage features of the district, and certainly, that was really... That expertise was vital and critical to the successful conclusion of the heritage conservation area. So they... They really do have a lot of very, um, uh, detailed knowledge of how to, um, evaluate all of the aspects for statements of significance, and have actually documented statements of significance.
Sir, may I ask for clarification on what you meant by documented? Do you... Do you mean preparing, or reviewing, and commenting, or what?
They have actually written the statements of significance for use in the, um, in the district.
So the question is, what's their most important function, sort of going forward, to help you in your work? Would you... Do you believe that is...
I... I believe that still is... Is very, very important, because perhaps applicants may come forward with a statement of significance that, uh, they will gain... They'll have assistance with, but there are many times in the, um, the district, I... I think that we will have district features that we will want that input, and this is where the expertise lies, is in documenting.
Thank you.
Councillor Green?
Thank you. Um, they've also provided, um, some development and assistance and guidance and maintenance of the Heritage Register, and this is the register that, um, registers both, um, houses for registration and for designation. So the Heritage Register is a key element of heritage preservation and conservation in Oak Bay, and without their involvement in that piece, it... It would be difficult for us to... To be more aware and be able to track these... These landscapes, homes, and features.
So going forward, they would be involved in the Heritage Register?
Well, I would hope they could provide, uh... I... I would hope they could serve as a resource to the maintenance and expansion of the Heritage Register. The goal has always been to expand the Heritage Register over time, the goal of the district, I'm... I'm saying. And of course, the commission shares that... That goal. And the other pieces, um, they have been helpful in providing input and guidance on land use that involves heritage properties and neighborhoods. They were, uh, I believe, quite involved in the... The development of our first heritage conservation area, and the mayor will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they had... They had a role in that... That process. So they have a role to play in... In helping us to identify and target, you know, significant heritage or historical, either buildings, or, um, landscapes, or, uh, features that are valuable to the community. Thank you.
Just for clarification, too, there was a... Select committee struck for the heritage conservation area, uh, which contained members of the Heritage, uh, Commission, as well as Foundation, as well as quite a number of others, as well of representative... Representation from Advisory Planning Commission, Advisory Design Panel, uh, and to the commissions and members at large. So it was a... It wasn't a Heritage Commission body unto itself, but it had membership from there, and ultimately was, uh... They were one of the bodies used to, uh, to review the document and provide their input on it as well, prior to its, uh, its coming back and finalization for council.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead, Councillor Appleton.
Thank you, Worship. And through you. Um, I guess I would say that the commission functions to help interpret, uh, the goals of the OCP, uh, in the context of heritage. So the OCP is a broad-based strategic document. The conservation of heritage is a broad-based concept in and of itself, with a lot of moving parts. So I would say having the expertise to cast a lens of heritage on the implementation of the OCP goals, um, is what, uh, is... In terms of how the commission can help council, I see that as being... As being key. It is about implementing the goals of the OCP when considering heritage.
So interpret and implement?
Well, I guess implementation's a very broad thing, right? So, um, there... There are functional pieces which... Which may not fall within the purview of the commission. There are some functional pieces which may fall into the... Into the purview of the commission. So it's tough to say, yes, tactical operational matters of type X would fall in there, uh, but what I would say is, is that there are a number of different... There is heritage conservation, and then there's, uh, applied heritage considerations in the community, a broader heritage consideration, uh, that this body brings expertise to.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, Councillor Neay.
I guess just on a... On more sort of technical, less sort of visionary, um, point, is, uh, they... They will bring forward to, uh, council, uh, a budget proposal that we... We consider at budget time. So they... They begin that... That piece and make a... A proposal to the council for consideration.
Thank you.
I'm gonna just go over to, uh, Councillor Braithwaite and Zelka, if there's anything you want to, uh, to jump in here with at all?
Um, yes, it's Councillor Braithwaite, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Councillor Braithwaite.
Um, thank you, yes, I would agree with, uh, the comments that have been said so far, and I think it's also, to me, um, one of the most important functions is, uh, that heritage has, is they promote heritage awareness and, um, and really provide leadership, um, on heritage initiatives within our community.
May I... Councillor Braithwaite, are you specifically speaking about the Heritage Commission, providing leadership on the promoting awareness of heritage?
Um, yeah, I guess so. Um, yeah, I think so. I think the Foundation does add a lot to you, though, so, you know, it's a... It's a kind of a blurred line, perhaps.
Okay.
We're trying to... Kind of get rid of the blurred lines tonight, that's our goal.
Yeah.
And, uh, Councillor Zelka as well.
Go ahead, Councillor Zelka.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, I... I appreciate all the comments around the table so far. I... I... I look to the official community plan, um, and I thank you, Councillor Appleton, for... For mentioning it, uh, section four seven two, H R one in particular, um, as... Something that I really, uh, would look to the Heritage Commission to... To help, in particular, advise us. Um, it... It seems to me, and I... Some of the evidence I've seen is that we don't use the Heritage Commission near as much as I wish we did. Um, for example, recently, we... We had a question, uh, sixty-day, uh, blockage on the... On the, uh, teardown of a house, as we considered whether to, uh, force designate the house or not. And I... I would have loved to have had input from the Heritage Commission on that, and I don't believe we, um, uh, we availed ourselves of that. So, uh, anything that involves heritage, I really would love to see the Heritage Commission, uh, chime in on from an advisory perspective, because they do have such a depth of knowledge, which, uh, which I'll never be able to, uh, obtain, uh, in my, uh, just that the amount of experience on that commission is always impressive for me. Um, I really also would love to see them chime in on... On an area that is very important to me, having to do with conversions and retrofittings of existing homes. You know, I... I... There is a desire to bring more people into Oak Bay somehow, uh, and yet there's a fear of losing, uh, the charm and the look and feel of... Of the town. And, uh, I... I know the Heritage Commission, uh, can advise us on... On some aspects of that, as a way of, uh, bringing more people in. Um, I don't know whether it's gonna reduce the cost or not, but at least we can, uh, gently increase the density, and I'm sure they can help in that area as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Zelka. Any other comments around the table? Go ahead, Councillor Patterson.
Thank you. I think a very important role that the... The commission, um, plays for... In Oak Bay, in... In looking at heritage, has to also look forward. Heritage is, um, evolves like any... Any other, um, consideration, and so the... The heritage members should, although the funding hasn't always been there as of late to provide it to them, but it should be the body that, um, ensures that they have membership in B C heritage, uh, that keeps up to date with what is happening... Happening across the... The province and across the region, um, and networks, and I know that the commission, um, members do that now. They do network with, particularly, the City of Victoria's heritage program, and so that constant, um, reassessment of what heritage means and... And the relevance of it, that's... I really look to that body to bring those, um, comments back to council and... And give us the advice of having the knowledge of... Of what transpired in the past, and what they're doing right now, how we can evolve that to continue to be relevant in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. I think... I think you touched on something... You didn't say it specifically, so I think I'm gonna interpret what you said as well, because it deserves, I think, um, inclusion in that. It's just that technical expertise, and so, um, it ties to all of that, to actually having... Providing to council, uh, and to applications, technical expertise, not just sort of opinions of pieces, but, uh, so that training leads to that aspect. Go ahead, Councillor Neay.
Um, do you, Mayor? Are we talking about what they do do, or what we think they should do?
What you think they should do.
Should do, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, um, an almost long-forgotten document is that heritage plan that came out in, um, in, uh, the Oak Bay Heritage Plan in 2013, and I... I know some of you refer to it, but I... When I look at, um, many of the goals and actions in there, and sometimes I ask myself, why are we in this place where we're seeing so many of our...
Valued.
Uh, older homes being toppled left, right, and center? And I look at this... These goals and, uh, many of the actions here, I ask myself, so, well, who's doing the work here? Who's... Who's helping to formulate the... The policies that would strengthen our ability to meet the goals that were articulated in that plan? Because I think it was really quite a good plan. And as I was perusing this, revisiting this in preparation here, I just thought, there's so many... There's so much work to be done, and we're not doing it at the council table, and it seems to me that we're really underutilizing the expertise on that commission to help inform some strategies here that could strengthen this program, um, and meet the goals that, uh, have been articulated here.
Thank you, Councillor Neay. Councillor Green, you had your hand up?
I did.
Go ahead. Oh, you have to turn off your microphone, Councillor Neay. There, now you're... Now you're live.
I agree with all the comments that have been made so far, and I just...
I agree with all the comments that have been made so far. And I just wanted to just bring a, sort of a technical aspect to this discussion. And that is that, in fact, what we do with heritage in Oak Bay is also regulated by the province. So we, we're dealing with provincial legislation, legislation and then our own bylaw around the, the structure and purpose of the Commission. But this, this is about land use. Heritage is not, doesn't always get the recognition it deserves, or it, it isn't valued the way it should be generally. No, I don't mean in Oak Bay, I mean generally. Um, it is a land use body. Heritage is about how we use heritage lands. And so I, I think we have to keep those two things in perspective, that one is a provincial perspective, one is, um, a land use perspective. And so a Commission like this ideally would be complementary to whatever our, our planning functions are within the district, which are important. And, and just to be reminded, we did not have a qualified planner until 2014. So for years and years and years and decades, Oak Bay functioned without qualified planning expertise. And so I think this is, that's the juncture at which I think trying to find a fit between our qualified planning department and the Commission in terms of how they intersect around heritage land use.
Thank you, Counselor Green. And I think, you know, one of those questions is, you know, we need some guidance on, on this, the things like the statements of significance. Where does that flow through our staff? Where does it flow to the Heritage Commission? Um, you know, where does that responsibility lie? Where's, is it review? Is it a writing? Is it, what is there, what is the role in that process, right? So those are things I think that we need some clarification on.
And there's a, that's coming up as one of the questions to discuss specifically.
I, um, is there anything else? Big question, number one?
Mayor, you haven't, do you have anything?
I threw mine at the beginning on that. I, I took, I took the easiest one. I took the lowest hanging fruit. That's my job. Um, you know what? I, I think it's really, it's fascinating to me to just to hear that because it's, it's aspirational in, in all those ways and things that have been done and how we fit that into a structure. I actually was, uh, I, I was going through the, you know, what we want. And I was actually used the, the executive summary of the heritage plan as a piece of like, how do we actually achieve those same goals? And I appreciate, Counselor Ne, you, you raised that, like there's a lot of things in there. And it was, as I was going through my memory in the last few years of things that had actually happened, it was actually kind of nice. And I think maybe I'll just take this moment to express our appreciation for the work that was, has been done by the Heritage Commission, uh, in recent years. Uh, and certainly a lot of that, uh, you know, to the liaison of, of Counselor Patterson as well. Um, and then previous, some of this is previous council, some of it's this, but it's quite interesting in terms of, uh, this was, document was written, although updated more recently, uh, before the OCP, but just talking about the OCP and, and how much heritage is in that OCP and written into it and the fundamentals of philosophy and everything else. And, um, you know, including in that was aspirations for heritage conservation area. We've had our first heritage conservation area in there that had thirty-five scheduled houses and I think seventeen new registry added as well. Um, there's, uh, uh, new zonings that we put in for, for streetscapes that we, that, that has impacted the changes to the, to the structure of houses. Um, that was really influenced in many ways by those, the concerns raised about, um, you know, the, the massing and structure of houses. Uh, what else did I write down here? So I scribbled my notes as I was reading through it and I, as they came. Um, and, you know, it's all some of the things for plans for development compatible with community character. And that's one of the primary things that we're working on at the council this term. Um, the evaluating, registering, protect heritage building and structures is ongoing, but, uh, you know, more needs to be done on that. I thought, there's a designation brochure that was identified as a thing to help, you know, educate people. That's now being done. We had to be paid for and hired a professional to, to design that and, and bring it forward. Um, there's a, I checked with, uh, staff on this and there's been around eleven, I think is the number I had in the last five years, new houses added to the Heritage Registry and nine new designated homes as well in that time. So a not insignificant number for Oak Bay and the work done. Um, recognition here of the stewardship of in conservation plants, municipally owned heritage resources. And of course, uh, this council added into the budget, uh, a few hundred thousand dollars to restore and bring back Todd House and, and fundamentally, uh, actually fund professionals to go in and do that work to, to provide that plan. And, and that's, that's underway right now. Uh, I think, you know, the Uplands Heritage does a recognition federally. Um, and again, these are often led by community groups and thesis, but supported by heritage, uh, and supported by council. Um, a lot of this, this document talks about protection of natural spaces and the coves and things. And, and we've implemented, uh, probably about six years ago now, the riparian and shoreline D P As. So ensure that anything within fifteen meters of the shoreline is naturalized and, and protects those natural spaces. Um, we have not dealt with paving and blasting as much as we have, uh, other things. I will say that. Um, but, you know, promote opportunities for joint activities and just the, the amount of work done with the Friends of Uplands Park and Green Teams and other things that, that really tie to that, those natural spaces. And, um, I think, and then it says also talks about continuing to enhance and support Oak Bay Heritage Commission and Heritage Foundation. And I think that I'll end on that one because it's, uh, it's such a, exactly what we're doing here tonight, trying to find that piece. Uh, oh, actually one I didn't even think of, but of course we added a heritage to our community amenity, uh, policy so that we can actually see heritage as a, as an amenity provided to the community and protection of that. So there's a lot that's happened and I, so I don't want to just pretend that nothing's happened. Lasted a while and it's been good. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
Just if we're building on that wonderful list that you have rolled out, I thought I would add to it because I don't think we should forget that certainly our tree protection bylaw and our urban forest strategy, the catalyst for that was our Heritage Commission and their, their push for that and the complete streets report. All of that were, were, all of that work was, was really, they were the catalyst. They were the movers for that. And, and they were all successful programs. So, um, you know, really a lot, yes, there is still, as Counselor Ne pointed out, there, there is still much to be done. But really for a small community, what they have achieved over the last few years is, is really outstanding performance for a, a group of volunteer, a volunteer body.
Yeah, thank you. And I think importantly, where we've been successful has been community groups, heritage, Heritage Commission, Heritage Foundation, council and staff all kind of, you know, working in the same direction. And I think that's, you know, if there's something we can accomplish here today is to ensure that we're building in the, the processes to allow for that joint work together as, and not sort of going off in different directions, um, but doing that. So I guess maybe that's the other thing that I might add to this since I haven't, uh, is, is that what can they function? They can provide the function of identifying heritage priorities and allowing that to be brought into our strategic priorities process as well. Um, because some of those things that Counselor Patterson raised, um, they have a different lens and they may be able to flag things for us. And I think, I think some opportunity for them to bring, uh, things forward is also an important aspect of, of their, of their responsibilities. Go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
Well, one of the things that, you know, I aspire to certainly for them, we, we didn't get a start on this, but in 2016, Canada became a full supporter of the U N Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples or UNDIP. And so that was, um, a, a huge part of the, um, discussion at the 2018 B C Heritage Conference. Um, unfortunately, we didn't have members attending the conference, I didn't myself, but the, the workshops that went on throughout the province that year, um, certainly that was, uh, foremost in what they were all really getting involved in. And that is something that I would certainly look to our Heritage Commission and even the Foundation to, um, provide us with, with insight and, uh, really help us, you know, look at where we might want to go with that.
See, I opened the floodgates with my last comment. Never, never give the mayor the last chance to speech. Go, go, go ahead, Counselor Ne.
Well, I, I really appreciate that, um, that list because it, you know, it, it is easy to, to put that aside because we do it and then it's done. And we don't really see, we, we start to, it gets normalized and we just get used to those things being there. But those are all responses, that's true, to, um, this plan and the work that the, the Commission has been doing. You know, on that note, and not to be negative, but to be focused on the, the task here. But, but I, I really do appreciate setting the stage with all those positives that have been accomplished. But in, in that, in, in response to that, and Mayor, you made a proposal that one of the things the Commission could do is to identify priorities. And if I may, as a council member, I, one of the things, and I'm no expert in heritage, I've just kind of been watching what happens and what, as it comes to the council table. But I do hear the frustration of the Commission about the seeming, um, uh, helplessness that, uh, that we have as citizens of this community when we want to protect and preserve a, a building and it just disappears before us. And, and what are those tools? What are those policies that we have yet to develop that will make it more likely that we, we have a half chance of protecting those buildings? And so when I look at the, the, the plan, I look at point, uh, two point two under goal two, that speaks to the reviewing of heritage protection policies and develop plan to increase long-term effectiveness of protection mechanisms. Because it seems to me it's those, those policies that lie behind the decisions that we're making, that they're just not there. Staff hasn't got them to, to, to help make their decisions when they're working with applications. And it's on that note, I'd be very curious what the Commission could, could do in terms of research and understanding and advise, um, council to inform our decisions around, um, in terms of, to develop policy, um, to, um, improve the long-term effectiveness of the protection mechanisms.
Thank you, Counselor Ne. Policy. Policies are important. Uh, Counselor, or, Counselor, Ms. Verella, did you have, you see your microphone on?
Just to provide a comment, Your Worship, because I, I, I think it's wonderful to celebrate the successes and, and some of the insight that council has provided, um, on its aspirational goals and, and pieces like that. That idea of, uh, the Commission, staff providing expertise, council providing governance, somehow filtering this into a work plan, funding it if appropriate, recognizing authority of the local government. It's been interesting and as I've been reading some of the, uh, public correspondence, because the word authority keeps coming to mind about what can you do as a local government and what can you not do? And some of the aspirational pieces I'm seeing, I don't think actually fit within that framework. And I think that's why we have to have this cooperative effort between councils, staff, the Commission, and the public in general to actually say, what is doable, what isn't, and then how do we slot that into the work plans, get council's direction on it? So just, just a reminder about authority and, and that cooperative piece. I think that's exactly where you're getting to.
Thank you, Ms. Verella. Ms. Winters, I, you, I think we've, may have exhausted our, our item number one. We can always come back to it. Uh, let's get on to question number two. I just want to give it also a chance for the public to have a chance to call in and, and, and give their feedback on, I'm gonna, I think we'll do all three and then we'll, we'll go back to those, all three questions for the public to call in on. I think it's the easiest way of doing that.
Okay. Um, thank you, Your Worship. So the next question, um, and you've touched on this already, the need to, and, and we don't need to get specific here because there are some very obviously specific tools, like somebody mentioned, membership in heritage B C, for example, and that kind of thing. But this is again, a big broader level. Um, how would you, how do you let your Commission volunteers know that they're, they're valued? Um, how do you, how do you invest in them in a way that they see is meaningful and that they're, that, that they're, they feel that their work is, is meaningful and, and that it's providing value to the district? And maybe it's too broad a question because there are some very specific ways. But I, I just, I guess like the reason that this question is up here is because I kept hearing or reading that, um, somehow, um, it's, it's felt maybe that council doesn't value the work of the volunteers. Um, they produce a work plan, for example, but it doesn't, um, go forward with funding at council. Um, and there are, you know, that, there are, I think, really easy ways to fix that by making sure that if they produce a work plan, that it comes at a time that council is considering budgets and strategic priorities and all of those things. So I just wondered if you felt, um, if you're, if you're sensing that people aren't feeling valued and what that would look like, how, how to make people feel more valued as volunteers?
Thank you, Ms. Winter. I, I can, my, I'll take the low hanging fruit one. One, I think they have to be busy. I mean, at the end of the day, there has to actually be meaningful work for them to do. And what that looks like, I don't know exactly, but I think, you know, if it's make work or as you say, if they're doing work that isn't, that just dies on the vine before, after they're done with it, um, there's, it's, there's zero sense of satisfaction and, and a feeling of, of not, not, not valuing or investing in that. And I think Counselor Patterson's point about, um, membership and, and specific training and heritage expertise is a really important one.
Maybe I'll jump in next.
Go ahead, Counselor Braithwaite. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Braithwaite.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I've, there was a letter that came in in November and it, I remembered, um, and I wrote down part of, a part of the letter because it, it really kind of resonated with me. And it, it basically said that a well-performing and meaningful Heritage Commission works in, in mutual partnership with staff and council. This mutual partnership includes optimizing the experience, knowledge, knowledge and interest of members in ways that ease workload pressures on staff, recognizing community volunteerism, and allowing the Commission to proactively assist council in advancing heritage policy objectives. And I think that is, you know, that's coming from what their volunteerism means to them. And I think that if we can show, um, how we value that and, and, and we can promote education within that, within the, within the Commission, that would really help a lot. And I think Counselor Zelka also said, um, talked, touched on the depth of knowledge. And we have such a depth of knowledge in our community that we, that we do need to tap into that. And so recognizing and valuing that is, is very, very important, I think.
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Are there any other? Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Worship and through you. Um, I, I guess I would say that, um, you know, being very, uh, direct, I guess, I, I know and I recognize, having, uh, read and, and heard the feedback from the Commission, that, you know, there's concern about the revised mandate and the revised language, uh, being restricting and, and not allowing them the discretion to work on the projects that they see are as important. And, and I hear that. I guess, so in terms of how do we value the group, I think that some of the work that we've done already to be really clear and defined in the mandate and the scope of the work and what is within their capacity to, to do, there are certain things that they, they will not be allowed, well, just from the purposes of the Local Government Act and the, and the way things function, that they would not be able to be involved in. So I think we owe it to the group to be as clear and as, as crystal clear and as well-defined as possible in, in the scope and the operational world that they can, that they can operate within and, and be really clear about where they do have discretion and where we do, uh, have a, a broader scope. And I think so much work's been done already on this. As far as the terms of reference document, uh, prepared by staff, uh, there's, there's room for more input on that. Uh, but I think everybody should start their tenure or, or be participating in a Commission with a clear understanding of what their, their capacities and their, their operational envelope, for want of a better word, is. Um, and that's not to be restricting. I, I understand that that can be interpreted as being restricting. And I think we owe it to the volunteers to allow as much leeway and creativity as, as absolutely possible. So that's, that's not to say that that shouldn't happen. Uh, but everybody should be clear about what everybody can and cannot do.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Counselor Green, then Patterson.
I'm gonna go out on a bit of a limb. And I'm gonna say that I don't think in, in an overt way, we have valued them well in the, certainly in the last year. And that part of that is COVID. But I think where things started, from my perception, going off the rails a little bit, was when the review of committees and commissions occurred. And then there was a tremendous delay. And, and that isn't anyone's fault. It, it is really a set of circumstances. But I think we, we, we have a situational issue that, that was never fully resolved. And it's very hard to resolve in a never fully resolved, and it's very hard to resolve in an environment like this one. But following on Counselor Appleton's comments, I think the word "authority" has taken a pretty negative tone interpretation. I think we have to be careful with the word "authority," and I appreciate Ms. Verella's comments very much. I know what we're trying to get to, but somehow it has been misinterpreted. And, you know, the old saying, "Action, not words." I think we really have to demonstrate, somehow find a way to demonstrate to the volunteers that we are trying to enhance their role, not diminish it. And I think there has been misunderstanding in that regard. And I think I speak with some authority myself, because I was liaison from 2011 to 2014. I was then a member of the Commission, then a chair. So I've been on both sides of that table, and I have some empathy for how they might be feeling, rightly or wrongly, valid or not. They feel how they feel. And we have, I think, a responsibility to try and find new ways of valuing the work and demonstrating the value of the work. My opinion.
Thank you. May I just jump in, Your Worship? I think it's important when we talk authority. Authority is where council and the district derive their ability to act and to govern the District of Oak Bay. So authority being legislative authority, whether it's the Local Government Act, the Community Charter, your own bylaws. So that's the meaning within tonight's context, just to be really clear on that.
I think that's very helpful, and we are all bound by those, no matter how much we'd like not to be sometimes.
Everyone from council to staff and all your volunteers.
Yes, I think we all chafe a little bit at times. Ms. Verella, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you for jumping in there, Joanna, because I think that's exactly it. Perhaps we can agree on the verbiage to start saying something like "enabling legislation" or something like that. For example, you know, some of the requests I'm seeing coming forward that are aspirational, you actually don't have that ability under your enabling legislation. So when we talk about authority, that's probably somebody who's been in government a few too many years, maybe, I'm not sure. But I thank you for the comment, and certainly if that's a word that lands better, we can start using that in our reports and our presentations going forward. So I appreciate those insights. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Green. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you. And that is a much friendlier term. I'm going to have to writing that down, "enabling legislation." But that is, the heart of a lot of this, too, is that I think that the members of the Commission somehow, with changes in the evolution of how things played out, the Commission members lost the ability to be, to actually have an active voice in developing their work plan. And I think it's really important that the members of the Commission can be part of building the work plan, identifying what types of education or what format the education should come in, what is needed for that, so that we, as a council, can look at how we might fund that. And I think then it is also really important to them to be, to have a voice in evaluating whether we're meeting objectives, whether we're being successful, or, you know, what other steps we need to take. And they haven't had a voice, and this past year has been particularly difficult, but I think they have such valuable expertise. However, there will be turnover. And so certainly, I know that there is a strong concern about sharing knowledge, continuing the education, and recruiting effectively, so that the valuable background in heritage that we have because of these volunteers in Oak Bay will continue into the future. And so some of them are ready to pass the torch, so to speak, share the knowledge with new recruits coming on. And so they want to have an active voice in how we might manage that process going forward.
Thank you very much, Counselor Patterson. Anything else people see here? Counselor Zelka or Braithwaite, you're more than welcome to jump in here if you have anything else to add. Okay, I'm not here.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Sorry, Counselor Zelka, you don't have anything to add?
No, thank you for the opportunity. I'm still listening in and learning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think the one that I haven't heard here was just the, how we can help, and this, I think, is both to value to the Commission and to the district, is providing, you know, the staff and the support for minutes and consistency on that sort of procedural administrative front. I think one of the things that has happened that's added frustration to the Commission over years has been similar to what's frustration at this table over years, which is we haven't had the attention to detail on the administrative side as we should. And so things have been done, and then they've sort of, you know, what happened to that? Didn't we vote on that three years ago? And it's just sort of disappeared. It's not in the minutes, it's not in the record. It's sort of, so all the things that we're doing as a council, so carefully, you know, document what we're doing, track what we're doing, those pieces, I think we can provide a lot of value if we fund and provide that consistency through staffing and as a big part of that. So that'd be one other thing I would add. And I think it benefits us as well.
There's only three questions, right?
There's three.
Okay.
But then there's all the specific things that we want to speak to as well. So we're not over after these three questions.
I know, I know. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
So my question, this is another important one, because we've already touched on it a little bit, and it will come up more specifically later. So just to sort of get some big comments out, and then maybe we can address them and come up with some specific solutions later. What do you believe are the key differences between the Heritage Commission and the Heritage Foundation? And I guess, when I say "are," I guess it's really, should be. What should be the differences so that what you heard during the Commission and Committee review, that there was confusion and lack of clarity on the role and mandate, and it's already come up tonight already about which group should be doing education and awareness? So let's change that slightly. What are the key, what should be the key differences between the Heritage Commission, your Heritage Commission, and the Community's Heritage Foundation?
Go ahead, Counselor Green.
I think one is, and I made a brief reference to it earlier, is land use decision-making. So the Commission has input into land use decision-making related specifically to heritage land use. And that is something the Foundation does not do.
Thank you. Are there other? Go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
Certainly one of the roles that the Foundation has that the Commission does not do, the Foundation handles the grant applications and, of course, disperses the funds. And so that is totally separate from any land development bodies. So that, I mean, that's a very important difference between the two of them. It keeps those two roles very separate.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton.
Counselor Zelka?
Okay, I'll go, Appleton, then Zelka. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. I would concur with Counselor Green, that, you know, the focus of the Commission is around land use decision-making and those specific elements of land use and land use applications which are before council that may have heritage implications. In my view, the Heritage Foundation definitely is the organization responsible for the outreach and the education, the broader presentation of the broader concept of heritage to the community. And I may be speaking out of turn here, I don't mean to speak for the members of both organizations, and I will absolutely be corrected. But I have seen some statements in some of the correspondence that I've seen and in some of the feedback that seems to imply something to the degree of that the Heritage Commission needs to retain a role in advocating small A advocacy to council and communicating priorities and vision and those kinds of things to council. And I understand that. I guess there's a, I would see that the Foundation itself, if there is a motivation to communicate a larger strategic concept or idea for heritage writ large, that this could also come from the Foundation itself. And I, you know, I'm willing to be corrected on mechanisms, for sure. But it seems that because of the historical blurred lines between the two, it's, I guess, in the terms of the Commission being the official commission of council, that that was where the members felt that that was where those types of strategic initiatives needed to be communicated, so that they were going, I guess, for want of a better word, directly to council or through that council body. Whereas if there are strategic and conceptual heritage pieces, those could be advanced by the Foundation as well.
May I clarify? So you see a role for both, or do you see it more at the Foundation on the bigger picture, conceptual?
Again, it kind of relates to my earlier comment about jurisdiction and what the Commission is there to do. So I think that, again, clarifying for roles, you know, do we absolutely want to hear from individuals and bodies in the community about their strategic ideas for heritage preservation? Absolutely. But the Commission itself is limited in those matters which would be forwarded to it for consideration by council. That council would be asking for input on certain matters. So it comes down to this issue of how much unique novel content is to be generated at the Commission table versus what is requested from, of the Commission from council. So again, not to be restrictive of the creativity of the Commission, but there may be some limitations, as Ms. Verella has pointed out. There may be limitations of some things that may not actually be jurisdictionally possible or legislatively possible. However, they could still be discussed and presented to the community at large through the Foundation, because it's a different type of body.
Thank you for that, Counselor Appleton. Counselor, oh, Zelka? And then Green, you wanted to speak again? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Zelka.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so a great question, number three, what should be the differences? From a very practical perspective, you know, I come at it from a sort of a systems perspective, and I'm a trained engineer. At a very practical perspective, the Commission, of course, is bound by enabling legislation since it's a creature of Oak Bay Council, whereas the Foundation is not, which allows it much greater freedom. However, within those two sort of things that are separate, I would look for this body, the Heritage Commission, to possibly consider innovative ways of looking at the enabled legislation that maybe council hasn't thought about. So while there are boundaries that we all have to abide by in the enabling legislation, there's obviously innovative ways of looking at things. So that's why I would look to Heritage Commission to see what could be done within the boundaries of that land usage piece around heritage, that maybe they can offer suggestions on how we can achieve our overall objective. However, the Heritage Foundation, I could definitely see that they had the freedom to do practically anything they would like to do in terms of services to Oak Bay, independent of the District of Oak Bay.
Just for my clarification, Counselor Zelka, are there things that you see that you would like them to do that, because really we have a body of expertise in this room right now, that really is second to none in terms of legislative knowledge? So is there something that you think, in just keeping this not away from the technical into the aspirational intent, that you would like the Commission to do at this point? And then we can consider how we might achieve that.
Well, I would hope that as we, not just tighten up, but as we clarify and, in some ways, backfill some of the areas, our broader areas within Oak Bay, District of Oak Bay, of all of our policies and all of the various areas that have been a bit, my opinion, a bit loosey-goosey in the past, and have, again, my opinion, have led to an appearance or an idea that sometimes decisions are made without full consideration from the public. I do know that there is a worry out there amongst some of our Oak Bay citizens, that sometimes it has looked like Oak Bay is not listening. So I definitely understand why there's a desire for the Commission, for example, to allow public input. And if for some reason there's enabling legislation that doesn't allow that, then there has to be a place for that public input to go, maybe through the Foundation, and also a way, in the larger context, a way that we can continue to build trust or already backfill the trust that apparently has been lost, to ensure that people feel that they are heard, if not at the Heritage Commission or Foundation, then at least at council, before we rush through to make decisions. So I would love to look to the Commission to solve this problem for us. It really is our problem to deal with what appears to be a trust issue around making decisions.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Zelka. Ms. Winter, did you want to, okay, captured the, go ahead, Counselor Green.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the existing bylaw for the Heritage Commission, bylaw number 450, 4550. Under Section 2, the mandate of the Commission shall be as follows, and I think subsection 2, that paragraph, is very, very general. There are some things in that paragraph, I think, that are valuable that we should retain, and there are others that blur the lines between the Foundation and the Commission. I think most of all, the Foundation wants to be proactive, and I certainly understand that, rather than reactive. And I think that's where they see themselves having a role in the public awareness, education piece. And I think specifically, though, related to the designation registration of homes, because in their role, or their, well, they have a role, obviously reflected here, to maintain the inventories of real property of heritage value, recommendations to council regarding the content of the Community Heritage Register, and the preparation and maintenance of a heritage strategic plan and heritage management plan. I think those are still valuable pieces, but those could be separated out. I don't believe the Foundation does any of those, to my knowledge. But correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor Patterson, because I've been out of the heritage realm now for three years. So we used to laugh and say that the Foundation were the party guys. They had all the fun and the Commission was the sort of, you know, the workhorse around these types of issues. So really, again, bringing it back to land use, that's, these are fundamental differences. I don't know what the status of this current bylaw is now, and particularly related to subsection 2, I don't know if these practices are continuing or if they have been. Maybe staff could fill me in, or, but this is where the Commission has taken its inspiration from, this particular bylaw, and subsection 2 in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. It is, of course, still in practice right now. So that is the Establishment bylaw, as it stands of today. We're looking at how we modify that in a way that makes sense and allows for that, so.
Go ahead, Counselor Patterson. I just want to express, anybody who's following at home and wondering, there is actually a really good summary document, it's three pages long, that has the Heritage Commission as proposed, which is the current bylaw that's in the package, not necessarily what's going to finish up. The Heritage Commission, which is the current The Heritage Commission, which is the current bylaw and the summary, and the Heritage Foundation current. And those three columns, thank you for the work done to distill those, because it allows for, I think, a lot of the discussion that we're trying to have here today. And it's good to delve into some of these specifics. At the end of the day, we want to make sure we're focusing on what we're trying to achieve out of this course as well. Councilor Green, did it... Councilor Patterson, did you have your hand? Go ahead, are you done, Councilor Green? Go ahead, Councilor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to point out that there was, there were attachments to this also. One attachment by the Chair of the Heritage Commission, and one by the Chair of the Heritage Foundation. And Robert Taylor, who's the Chair of the Foundation and has also served on the commission, is very knowledgeable. I think in his correspondence, he wrote, there's one statement in there that I think was really critical. And it is that, about the commission, "The function should not include, as it currently does, to promote heritage, as it confuses the roles of objective advice and lobbying." And I think that that is, that's sometimes not fully understood and something that we, I think, need to strive to clarify of, you know, what is the boundary line between the objective advice and actual lobbying? Because the commission should not be lobbying. And so, and I think that is something that there's been some confusion in the community, and frustration that comes out. Because I think there is a greater sense that the role of the commission is actually to be a lobbying group, and that is not what they are to be.
Thank you very much, Councilor Patterson. Anything else on this? Question number three? I keep jumping back and forth to letters and pieces here. Can we just bring up question number three on the screen again?
What should be the key differences between the commission and the foundation?
Go ahead, Councilor Green.
I was just going to add, the Heritage Foundation does a fabulous job of running a lecture series every year, and that's one thing that they do, the foundation does that. The commission may help in that regard, but they are not responsible for the lecture series. But they provide a tremendous support to that series as a commission.
And I think tied to that, because one of the aspects of the foundation's work, and it's marked by the attendance of the archivists at their meetings, is using the archives, both for research, but also for outreach, for knowledge sharing and for collecting stories of the community. So I think that responsibility or that connection to the archives, and even though it's interesting, because that's a municipal role, it's really falls to the foundation more than the commission. It's good, this is a good discussion to have on these pieces.
I don't mean to, I'll shut up eventually. One of the other things that the commission does really well is that they actually, they promote registration and designation, and they educate interested homeowners in that process and explain to them. So I know the foundation...
The commission does that, educates them, or the foundation?
No, they have provided an educational role, or informational role, in explaining to homeowners the differences between registration and designation in terms of legislation and practice. Now, I don't know if the foundation does the same thing. They do, yeah. So there's a blurred line, but I know it's helpful for homeowners to have a resource to tap before they make these decisions. There's a lot of misunderstanding about what it means to register or designate a home.
And I, yeah, I think there's probably a really good example of where the line has worked really well. The document, although it probably went in many different places, the document to inform the municipal processes around what is designation and how do you follow it, came through the commission, through staff, and back for review and approval. The heritage map, which maps out, you know, heritage assets and walks and stuff in the community, was the Heritage Foundation. And so one was really specific to the municipal processes and responsibilities, and the other one was educational, and informative, and even fun, and felt firmly into the role. So I think, I don't know, those are examples, not definitions, but I think those are reasonably clean. Even though they weren't entirely clean, because the discussion, I think, flowed back and forth between the two agencies. Go ahead, Councilor Patterson.
I think also, Mayor, the, one of the differences between the Heritage Commission and the Heritage Foundation is that the Heritage Commission with the strong emphasis on the statements of significance, which really, in order to have that, you have to understand the legislative requirements. So that clearly ties that into the legislative requirements, and not just what they like in the community. Whereas the Heritage Foundation gets in a lot more into what they like in the community. So it's not quite as anchored in legislation, it's a little more ambiguous.
Although I understand that in some jurisdictions, the Heritage Foundation or equivalent actually does research for the statements of significance, largely because they have the ability just to strike some committees that can have that knowledge and time to go through the archives and bring up information on behalf. So I don't know where even that necessarily lies in terms of their responsibility, so.
But I think that, I think that's where, because the Heritage Foundation was established first in Oak Bay, and the commission came later. I think there was that merging, because the foundation did a lot of that work originally for the district, and then it got more formalized when the commission took it over. And there's always been members that have participated in both for the shared knowledge and the continuation of that, and what each is working on. But it can tend to blur the lines a little bit.
Anything else? One thing I guess I picked up in this thread, and you don't have to write it down, but it's, where the commission falls in is where it overlaps with municipal or council business. So where we actually give, have to approve at the end of the day something at the council table, or it forms part of our official documentation, that's commission. Where it does not, it seems to fall to the foundation. And I mean, not entirely clear, because things like grants and things, you know, but they're arms-length, and probably for good reasons, so they're not political in nature. I'm sure there's reasons for that structure to be set up that way, so. It's a good discussion, thank you much, thank you very much. Anything else before we get to some of these specific questions? Seeing any, so let's move on, Ms. Winter.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I mentioned that I've spoken to people and read correspondence and done lots of research. And so there were some specific things that I wanted to highlight and have, give council an opportunity to discuss, because they seem to, sort of, I think, based on some of your aspirational comments, this will help you narrow some things down in terms of thinking about a mandate as you go forward for the commission. So one of the things that we heard was ensure that the work of the Heritage Commission is directly related to the OCP and/or Heritage Plan, which you've said earlier that it would be good to have a connection there. And I just want to say, sort of in general about these comments, sorry, just to go back, take a half step back. I think some of these things we're going to find are related to changes that have happened in the district over the last number of years, particularly with coming on of planning staff and so on and so forth. And I think that's changed some roles. And I think it's really important that as people go forward, and I wrote, somebody touched on communication, that there is a job in helping make the volunteers feel valued in communicating. And I think that part of that, because one of the things that I heard was that really what council does in setting its priorities and work plan for a year or for a term should be related to what's in the OCP and the Heritage Plan, because those are guiding documents for you. And so, where is the disconnect there? And is it a matter of communicating that better? Or is it perhaps a matter of bringing commission members in to council's discussions when you're doing your planning and budgeting? That's, I guess, a potential solution there, and there are probably others that you may have ideas for.
I might just, my first take, sorry for jumping in, if there's anybody else wishes to go, I'll just... Just, I think, two things. One, yes, OCP and Heritage Plan, but there's a lot of the land use, which, you know, it sort of touches on OCP, but it's not, most of what we do is not. It's informed by those documents, but the decisions have to be made, the recommendations have to be made at the commission level, you know, based on those guiding documents. But at the end of the day, their judgment has to be used, using all of the technical knowledge. As Councilor Patterson said, the guidance for heritage changes over time, so they're there to give that advice in the modern context. But I think using it, leaving it at a high level is OCP and Heritage Plan is not really, because those are the informational pieces that inform. And then they would also be responsible for guiding the changes to those where necessary, as well as those changes happen. So not that different from what we do at this table, where we, if our OCP or other guiding documents are out of sync with what we're wanting to accomplish, then we have to make those modifications. But I think, yeah, I think goes into the other thing I would put in there, is that there's a lot of procedural pieces that don't tie to that. And I think there really is a mechanism here, as we are, you know, we formalize and moved our timelines forward in our process of getting some formalized feedback from maybe all the advisory bodies. I think Advisory Planning Commission is another good example, where if they see issues of topics of interest, or they see that there's work that, say, has to be done to revise the heritage plan, they would bring that forward and say, here's what we want to work on. And that would come to us to say, yes, we support that. Because that would give money, staff time, and all the other pieces to make that successful. And if we don't do that, then we're off running on things that are not, that are just, have a very high chance of sort of coming in, we'll receive the report, and that'll be the end of that hard work. And I don't think we want that to happen. So I think, I think something in that structure has to be that we allow for that, the innovation, and to be brought forward, but that it has to go through that process. And because as we all know, at this table, there's lots of really great ideas out there. There's limited time and money. And so the hard part is always sort of saying, yes, that's worthwhile or not worthwhile. So that's all I would add to that.
May I jump in there on that one? Is it appropriate, then, that you would invite them to prepare work plan during your own budgeting and planning process? So that they dovetail, rather than you getting it in the middle of the year when there are no funds or all the funds have been allocated, and that leads to frustration?
Well, I think we're moving ours pretty early in the year. So I think one of the advantages of maybe if they, if one of their fall projects, kind of like our staff, put together their work plans for the following year, if they can kind of highlight things that they would like to do, and then that can inform, that can come in as part of our budget and priority setting package early in the new year. That would also mean that you're not getting people who might be just newly appointed, sort of being asked the big questions of things that they have a chance to learn and get the training and pieces prior to that ask in any given year. That's my take, so don't take that as gospel. I just, that's the way I would see this, that that would follow in a similar timeline to what the staff do in informing the budget and priorities. Councilor Green?
So Ms. Winter, you're looking for other options around solutions? Sorry, you're looking for...
Sure.
Other. So a couple of words come to mind, and I think they, I think I've heard them reflected in others' comments. Also, I think you referred to them. One is partnership, and the other one is resource. And so the way I envision, and it's just my vision, I envision these, all the commissions as partners, but also as resources, both to council, and ultimately, in the case of heritage, probably to staff as well. But partnerships, you know, they have to be working partnerships, and they require some investment. And I think, I think that's where we have a potential to maybe improve the way the commission works with our planning staff and with council, and as a resource, viewed as a resource. So that would be one option, is maybe redefining or redeveloping a working partnership with the commission, and then viewing them as a valuable resource to our decision-making process. But again, you know, I'm only speaking from the council's perspective, and I don't have the staff perspective on that. So that, for me, that's lacking. But I think corporate services in particular, one of the things that convinced me that would be a good landing spot for commissions and committees was because corporate services does provide that setting around regulation, around process and procedural requirements and legislation. So it seemed like a good place for the commissions to be working from. But I would be happy to hear from Sarah on, you know, well, no, you don't have to, not tonight. But is there room for partnership and room to expand the perspective of commissions and committees as resources? So that's, that's a question I can't answer, and it doesn't have to be answered here tonight, but...
It kind of does. And I think, you know, that role of how it advises is a really critical one. Ms. Varela, did you want to touch on that?
Well, I think it's back to one of those fundamentals, Your Worship, is the idea that council sees their advisory body as a resource, and they're one really important lens on a matter that you would consider multiple inputs on. So again, you're appointing people to an advisory body, whether it's this one or any other one, because you're looking for specific lenses, because you see that membership as a resource, a fundamental piece of your decision-making puzzle, along with those plans and policies, along with the staff perspective, along with public input. And those can all be very diverse. Those can all provide conflicting recommendations to council. That's where your governance piece comes in, is to balance all those valuable resources, of which your advisory bodies are one, your technical advice from staff is another, public input is another, and the list goes on.
We just have to have this tattooed on our bodies this day, this diagram. Go ahead, Councilor Patterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just would like to add something that the Heritage Commission had on, as one of their 2019 objectives, and we didn't really get to it. But it was to develop the importance of developing an orientation and training program for new members, and really critical to the whole recruitment piece. So that was something certainly that it would be really good if we could get started on that.
If I may jump in here, Your Worship, too, because that was one of the things that was loud and clear in the committee and commission report for all volunteers. And I know that staff are hard at work on that one and have some good ideas, and some of what we've heard is going to inform some of those orientation and education processes.
Ms. Varela?
And thank you for that, Councilor Patterson, because it really is about providing some context and big picture and framework, and, you know, opportunities for training, understanding processes, providing visuals, providing expert advice. Certainly even what we've developed for council that you experienced two years ago was a new and more robust orientation program than council had previously gone through. So we're taking even some of those pieces and adapting it for your advisory bodies. So that is well in hand and underway, so we look forward to bringing that to the bodies.
Thank you. Anything else on this, what was heard?
That was a big one, a fairly broad one, too, there's some more specific ones coming.
Councilor Zelka or Braithwaite, anything you wanted to?
Yeah, it's Councilor Braithwaite. I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask this, but I, just because I haven't come across it in reading the materials, and maybe I missed it. Where will statements of significance end up? Because I think currently Heritage Commission completes the statements of significance or helps with the statements of significance, and I'm wondering where that will end up with the new... And I'm wondering where that will end up um with um the new commission.
It's coming later.
Okay, we'll we'll touch on that one in a bit. Council Braithwaite?
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands up or voices piping up, so I think we can move on to the next. And I just for those watching at home, I think maybe this is a good chance to give a little plug. Uh, what I'll do is I'll allow people to call in, um, and just so people have some sense of timeline. It's seven thirty currently. At seven forty-five, so we'll give another fifteen minutes, we'll walk through as many of these slides as we can. I think I'll I'll probably open it up for for phone calls. Um, if we're almost near the end, I'll just keep going towards the end, but something in that timeframe I'm expecting. Uh, if you wish to call in close to that timeframe, I just not give any panic. Uh, but the phone number call in is two five zero five nine eight three three one one. Again, that number, two five zero five nine eight three three one one, it's the main number of our municipal hall. Uh, you can call in there, it'll get queued. If it's busy, just wait a minute and call back in again. Uh, we only have a few lines available. Um, and we'll take those calls. Uh, uh, it can be feedback from basically anybody from the public can call in and and provide your inputs on this. And certainly we've received all of the written communication that's been provided as well. So there's no need to repeat that if you've already sent in the written. Uh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Winter.
Thank you. So we've touched on a number of these already in the previous slide, but the Heritage Commission um said quite clearly that they would like to have the ability to gauge in other than land use matters. So self initiated matters, not just those items that are referred to them by council. And we've heard this in in some of our aspirational discussion earlier that um we don't they they don't want to have their creativity fettered, I suppose, is when we're putting it. And that we what we heard was that there's frustration when the Heritage Commission does self initiate. So, for example, they did a work plan back in twenty nineteen, but it didn't there were it didn't get funded or they felt it wasn't supported. Um, because I as I said earlier, the timing was wrong. They couldn't, you know, the the funds were for the year were already allocated, so they were great ideas. And also, did they connect to what council's priorities for that year were? So that disconnect. Um, and so those were two things that we heard. And so the next slide um talks about some a couple of starts off with some possible options or solutions. Sorry. This is a really sensitive microphone. Um, have so we've already talked about this actually um quite quite explicitly. Have the Heritage Commission develop a work plan that actually um reflects or supports council priorities and prefer and is aligned with the OCP or the Heritage Plan, but for consideration during the budget process. So then they've got their own work to do, they know what they're doing for the next year.
Is so again, I'll just I'll flag the downside of this is they might do that work in the fall. It'll come into our budget process. We don't approve our budget until the spring and they're off and running. So there'll be sort of a delayed leg in that process where they're working on it from probably March, April through till the following March, April while we're doing that. So that's that's the reality of the but municipal budgeting though, so I don't know as many ways around that, Ms. Rela?
I think that's the the challenge, Your Worship, though, is if if they develop a work plan at some point, what staff are hoping is that there's endorsement, so it actually can be resourced. Because that's the problem is that bridging. And so that timing is something that we we would have to look at, just as council brings forward additional items um that filters into that process, just like staff makes recommendations to filter into that process and work plans are developed. I think that's one of the things that um we have to tackle is how does that process actually happen? So that we are making the best use of volunteers' times and it fits in with council priorities and it fits in with department work plans. So it's it's a multiple a multiple piece. It's the ad hocness, I think, that is uh creating frustration from what we heard in the membership very strongly.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any other comments on this piece? Council Appleton?
I thank you, Your Worship, and not to uh beat this one to death, but I I think it does speak to the earlier point made about clarity. I think whatever process is is determined to be uh the way forward, I think it it behooves us and it's our responsibility to provide the commission with timelines, what's workable with if something is if a new initiative is to be raised, this is the way it should happen. And these are the timelines that need to that need to be adhered to uh in order to advance that through to council. And and the fact that it does need to uh adhere uh align with council objectives. Um, if it's to have a a reasonable likelihood of going ahead, I guess that's just an operational reality. Uh, there's any number of things that could could come forward. But I think that in, you know, obviously council will consider those things which align with the goals and objectives that they've set out for the district. So um I I it it behooves us to offer as much clarity and as much as much granularity on the process as possible.
Council Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to raise one item that I've given some thought to. I I'm not sure that I have strong opinions or or any advice to offer on it, but I it's certainly come forward in a lot of the correspondence and I I I've heard it echoed by members of the commission. And that is about um the involvement, perhaps, of public presentations at the commission. Um, and so as we have been working and evolving through our process at council of the um the procedural bylaw and how things are going to function, it's been particularly difficult this year and I don't know that our messaging has been um clear enough to to the public and to members of the commission. But uh and that is about having um committee of the whole meetings where people can speak and having time in advance if there are applications or something to be considered so that the public feel that they have a voice at the at the right time. And and the commission feel, I I suppose, that that the members of the community may be able to share knowledge that would be valuable in their decisions. But I think that we have to um complete the loop of reinforcing all of the places that that can take place and clearly articulating that out to to the our different um committees, commissions and to the public, because that is still certainly something I am hearing continuously. And I'm trying to to tell people we've done a new procedural bylaws, so.
And that's also a slide that's coming up. It was a loud and clear.
Okay, so maybe we could get delve into that one in the at that time. Um, it's probably appropriate unless Ms. Rela Rela, did you want to talk to it this time? Because we we have a slide on that to talk to.
Yeah, just an a note, Your Worship, that council only adopted that bylaw on Monday. So of course, it's pretty hard to communicate out other than the process leading up to it, which has been extensive. But certainly there will be an orientation for um council. We're looking at a sheet to communicate it out. It will be part of the orientation for advisory bodies. But again, uh, we can't promote something until council adopts it and that only happened on Monday.
It's three days, what's going on? What have you been doing? Um, thank you. As her uh well, let's let's delve into that. I I have notes on that question as well, because I think it it deserves some time and energy. So I think we're in agreement that that would be helpful if that's possible. And I think, you know, I think this is also, if I think about this, reflects that this is a that this is a commission of council, because one of the realities is that uh and and it's interesting, I mean, people talk about the Heritage Plan as if it kind of was done by the Heritage Commission. Uh, it was, but it they commissioned experts to come in and write it and they oversaw the process, which is the appropriate role, not they're writing it in person themselves. And I I think it's that that recognition that that's a very similar role to council's role is also important. And that again flows into that work plan, so it follows the same process attached to it. It's a little cumbersome, but at least it means that we're all on the same page, again, working together, which I think is probably the most important thing. Thank you.
So I I I alluded to this. I mean, I the district hasn't had a has had a commission, Heritage Commission, a lot longer than it's had planning staff. And so I think um there were times, this is one of the things that that I heard, was that um they had the commission played a more direct role in land use decision making um or had more autonomy in in heritage and decision ma- heritage matters. Um, and it's really important, moving forward, to clarify the role of staff and the commission. I've heard a lot tonight, you've talked partnerships and resources and communication is another theme. And then going forward, that's really what you need to do, I think. I don't know if there's more that council wants to do. Um, one of my questions, though, was how could the commission enhance and support the role of staff without it feeling like a a competition or um staff doing their job or staff feeling that commission's doing their job?
Thank you, uh, Council Green?
Yeah, I'm I'm just sitting here thinking that I wish um and and this isn't a criticism, but I wish we could have this conversation with volunteers and staff in the room too, planning staff. This is such an important conversation and it's one that I don't think Oak Bay has had for a very long time, if ever, in my experience. So I think this is a really important uh event. But it would be wonderful to be able to do something similar with staff and volunteers together as well, because I think you know, I think there is some misunderstanding. I do, I I well, I know that, in fact. I also think that um, you know, we're all human beings and sometimes we don't react or respond the way we are expected to. Um, and this pandemic, in particular, the last year, has been hard on everybody, especially uh staff and volunteers. And we've lost that public voice over the last ten months, we really have. I mean, I feel very out of touch with the community at this point. As much as we try to stay in touch, it's very, very difficult and we don't have any any means of bringing the public together. And I think this is what is inspiring some of the questions around having some form of public participation at at the Heritage Commission meeting. And and heritage is a key value for Oak Bay. It it's the one area that unfortunately is appearing to be under siege. Um, that that heritage homes in particular, and I think Council Appleton mentioned it, or Council Nae, I'm not sure. Older homes in Oak Bay are a threatened species, there is no question about it. And um so people immediately transfer that concern to the whole realm of heritage, heritage meaning old, historical, valuable. So I I think what we're dealing with is is some real visceral public feeling about what's happening and that we're losing the features of a community that actually brings people here in the first place. So there's a lot of that. And I think when you and I were talking on the phone, I talked about this interface between passion and regulation. And it does cause conflict and it does cause tension. And somehow we need to get to a place where we can bring those together. And in one way, the staff represents the regulatory side of the work and the commission represents, while it is an agent and regulated by bylaw, it represents the passionate side of the work. I don't know if that makes sense, but how do we bring those two together so that they work well together? And that there's a blending of both, so it it works well for everybody.
Thank you, Council Green. Anything else people want to add to this?
Uh, Council Braithwaite?
Go ahead, Council Braithwaite.
I I would re- reiterate every word that Council Green just said. I think that she she spoke it very articulately and I I couldn't add anything more to that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for that. I think if I had to add, well, um, was there anybody else who wishes to speak to this one? Looking around the room. I'm forgetting what I was going to say anyway, so that's all good. It's probably the best best course of action, just to wait long enough. Go ahead, Council Patterson.
I will just throw this out for um for consideration when if I look at what other municipalities do. So certainly I know that our Heritage Commission interacts a lot with the heritage um folks from the city of Victoria. And the city of Victoria, I noticed that their heritage um body provides recommendations to the committee of the whole and to council. So they actually are providing recommendations for that that public voice. And also their um their heritage committee and their design committee um both will provide recommendations to the the planning and land use uh committees. So they are tying all of those loops together. And I don't know that that is what we should do, but it I'm just putting it out there for for consideration because all of these groups do do tie together. And I know at the Heritage Conference, uh, there was great discussion on um climate change and its impact on on heritage. And so that the whole, you know, the the whole thing is coming full circle. And there are uh uh different elements that affect all the different groups, but they do tie together uh for the community. So we just put that out there for something that we we may want to um talk about.
Thank you, Council Patterson. I think the other question I always have with this is if we're investing in individuals who have a passion and a knowledge, we have an incredible depth of of skill sets in this community. Um, how do we leverage that in a way that is allows them the time to look at it? And this this will lead into some of the questions around public input as well. But if heritage decisions reflect both the cultural history and the built history of the community, then you know, some of that might have some research at the archives or or have some broader knowledge that comes to the table of of some of the 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 fact, the the community stories that are told or connections uh to a piece of property. Um, I I guess this is my just to your question, I don't know where that delineation happens, because there is that is not a reasonable expectation of staff to spend the time on those pieces, which are bleeding into the sort of support and celebration of of heritage, which is the foundation, um but tie off into things like statements of significance, where there is the there's the bare bones, which is the um, you know, the built portions that we're protecting, but also might want to, knowing which are the crea- critical elements, might actually require some of the social history as well. And I don't I'm I struggle with this one in terms of where that where that handoff is. And so I'm just raising the question without having an answer. Council Patterson has the answer.
I don't have I don't have the answer. That kind of got broadsided by pandemic, but I can tell you that um in the the uh the twenty nineteen Heritage Conference that the it was about reinterpreting um heritage, the conference, and we we did all the outcome of all the round tables and there was a lot of discussion. The twenty twenty Heritage Conference was uh supposed to be themed plate place and space. And it was planned to be focused on on how to evolve heritage programs to a multidisciplinary evaluation of buildings, financial performance, affordable housing, community development, sustainability, climate change and environmental impact. However, due to due to COVID, we were preempted and instead we have had a a series of webinars would had which have been informative and interesting, but not nearly as in depth as as I'm sure the conference would have been. So this is constantly evolving and it is invol- evolving at the provincial level. And so that's why I think that the commission members particularly need to be plugged into that network um so that they can hear those discussions um and think of of what if anything, will will they should be bringing back here for us to consider. So um hopefully that will maybe be held next year. I won't be attending that, so I will leave that to Andrew's capable judgment.
And it does lead right into the next slide.
Okay, so maybe we keep just preempting what you're trying to talk about, so maybe get to the next slide.
It's okay, I just want to finish off by saying, I really think, and and you've talked about this, I really think if you if if there's an approved work plan, that's going to be really helpful in terms of clarifying who does what and who's required to do what. Because then it's like, okay, the commission knows what it's what it's going to do, presumably within the work plan. I've seen the outline of how those what they look like. It says what resources are needed, what staff resources are needed, and who's responsible for doing what part of it. So I think that you will get there quite easily by just making that. That will address some of these issues.
As a person as a person behind some of those work, the staff work plans, uh, Ms. Rela, did you have anything to add to that?
Uh, I just wanted to uh note that in the policy that council, the count, the committee and commission policy that council adopted in July, it does talk about that referral process to council and advisory body making recommendations. It also allows for the ability for an advisory body to uh ask council for direction about something they might want to initiate mid-year that isn't part of the work plan. But I think the key piece there is that um it includes recommendations for projects or initiatives that the advisory body may wish to initiate in addition to those already approved in the annual work plan or is otherwise directed or delegated by council. So council could also decide to assign something to its advisory body mid-year. But again, there's a a process for it. There there are so many pieces of work plans and. There, there are so many pieces of work plans and, and staff time allocation, or just something hitting the agenda, or back to council, reporting out to the public, that if we can find ways to smooth these out, again, it's, it's not restrictive, it's a process, it's clarity of process. So even, even with that idea for new projects, or council's ability to assign, you do have that in your policy that you adopted in July.
Thank you. Counsel Patterson?
Thank you, uh, thank you for that information, Ms. Varela. It, it's useful. I think what needs to be clarified, though, is the actual mechanics for how that will be done, because there hasn't been an opportunity over the, over the last while for that, just because of the way it has been set up, and, and the staff liaison has been through, through building and planning. And so they ensure certainly that any of the app, the land development applications get on, but there haven't been the meetings to have those other discussions. So that's what we need, the mechanics for doing that.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Patterson. And I think this will be a little, no matter what we do, it's gonna be a little bit of a learning process this year, as we go through, and not a pleasant one, as we have to deal with COVID and remote meetings and all the other things that we're gonna be dealing with for the next little while as well. Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to move on to the next.
And this one, this one is self-explanatory. You've, you've said it tonight, we heard it over and over again, that it's really important that the volunteers have training and memberships in Heritage BC, and the opportunity to attend conferences and workshops, and that is all built in now, and is budgeted. And I'm sure that the C O would be able to speak far better to that.
It's only budgeted till we actually officially pass the budget.
Exactly. It's a recommendation for budget.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Right? Keep moving on on that one. I'm not sure there's really discussion that needs to be had. Again, this is another one. Really not much discussion, what we did here loudly, and I know you've all heard it, that the, the provide a greater role for the chair in developing agendas and reviewing minutes. And that is also provided for in the new commission and committee policy that council adopted in the summer, and the related guidelines. And so that has definitely been addressed, and will be implemented with the new commission.
Right. And I, I just want to, as the, as a person who's a stickler for these things, I think it's really important for, you know, if anybody's watching and, and listening to this, to understand why those, those minutes or the, the agendas are set, and they're not just kind of randomly done. Because the commission is dealing with things of delegated, you know, from council, often dealing with land use, often dealing with aspects of policy or governance, it's important that those agendas are provided with adequate time for the public to be aware of them, so if there's interest, they can see them. There, there's time for the members to, to have time to think about and consider that, and often time for staff to develop reports if necessary to help inform that, or at least come up with a process to move it forward. So the reason for that process is not to be heavy-handed, but it's to make sure that that, that those are supportive bodies are equally transparent, equally accountable as, as we are, frankly. And so I think it's, sometimes, again, there's bristling at that, just can't we just do things on the fly? It's really important to understand why we do it that way, is, is it's, it's a really integral part of our governance.
And the other piece to that is, if I may, Worship, and I've seen this in other communities where I've worked, is often people will put things on an agenda that really aren't related to the mandate of the, of the commission. And they bring things forward, and then there's frustration when they don't get supported, or they don't actually get on the agenda. And so again, it's, it's process, and it's clarity about the process and the role and the mandate, and what, what the commission can look at and, and doesn't look at in meetings.
Thank you. Anything else on this one? Not seeing anything at the table, not hearing anything from beyond the table. And just noticing it's about seven minutes till eight, so we'll try and get through this by eight if we can. And if not, we'll just open up the phone lines for people to call in and provide some feedback as well. Go ahead, Ms. Winter.
This next one's a biggie. And you've all touched on it a little bit. So we heard two conflicting things. Have the commission be the first point of public input in all things heritage, on all things heritage in Oak Bay, and have council be the first point of public input on all things heritage in Oak Bay. So the question really is, what does council want, and what does council believe is appropriate? Do you want to be the decision maker? Do you want, there's the, I think, coming up next is that you don't, maybe the next one? Next one? Oh, sorry, it was in there, I don't know. The diagram? Oh. Sorry, Selena.
You want the, the big, the diagram?
You know, that thing.
The new logo?
The new logo. You know, do you, does, does council want to make the decision, make the decisions? What if you, what if the commission has input on all things heritage, and then council doesn't accept the recommendations from the commission based on the public input? Who's the right, where's the right place for public input to go? So those are some of the questions to think about for you in making that, having this discussion in the next 10 minutes.
Just for clarification, we've had this discussion at the table a few times now. We keep coming back to the fact that we want to make the public input as, as public and as transparent, advertised as possible. So a lot of the changes have come to make those, bring them in an advertised format wherever possible. I think one of the questions I think that we struggle with here is not the sort of, the general public input, I'm against it or I'm for it, which I think has to be at council table, because that is ultimately part of that input for a decision-making, and it's part of the broader community values, not heritage. However, there is an aspect of, again, being aware of heritage stories, or narratives, or, or knowledge that might exist in the community, of people who might not be on the Heritage Commission at the time, but maybe they were, or have some back knowledge. And so is there a mechanism for providing either through written format, through notification process, something that allows for heritage-specific knowledge to be shared at that table, so that it doesn't go through them, come to us, we get new information, then we refer it back with that information? That's kind of the loop that we want to, I, I would think we want to avoid. And I think that's my notes on, on input, and, and Counsel Patterson, you have some thoughts as well. I know we didn't get to, but where is that split? Is it, is it heritage knowledge input, or is it to the broader community input? And I think the broader community input, we've been pretty consistent on that in our policies, to, to say we want that here in our procedures by law. But that does not necessarily exclude that there might be valuable information that would sit at that table. So that's where I, I struggle with. Ms. Varela?
Uh, thank you, Worship. So your policy does say, at the discretion of the chair, a committee or commission may invite other persons to participate in making presentations to the committee or commission. So example, if you were looking for a specific body of knowledge on an item, in order to benefit from that additional knowledge or expertise as provided for in the terms of reference or establishing by law, so back to giving it a process. And those presentations should be scheduled in advance prior to the agenda deadline, and must not pertain to land use applications. Because again, public input on a land use application happens at a public hearing. So there's an actual legislative piece to that. But again, the advisory body does have the opportunity, if they wanted to invite a presenter on a specific piece of, of knowledge, say, for example, statements of significance, whatever that looks like, there isn't a mechanism in your policy. It just can't be related to a land use application, because then it has the risk of running as an informal public hearing.
And is, is, yeah, just, I'll go to you in a second, Counsel Braithwaite, just for my clarification, is the development of a statement of significance for a heritage application of some sort, is that a land use application, or is that?
Uh, I was thinking more as an FYI for a larger education piece about best practices, about statements of significance, rather than the actual product on a specific piece of property. So again, you could invite someone from Heritage BC, if there was a particular item of interest. You could invite someone from University of Victoria, who may have a specific piece of knowledge that the commission could benefit from. Again, if it's related to a specific application or a property, that's where your risk lies.
So not to delve too far into details, but as an example, using our own example, if there was, for instance, an expert on Todd House, that we wanted to come and provide some knowledge for, would that be something that the Heritage Commission could invite for their consideration of something to do with that? Or that not be, because it's a land use kind of question?
Todd House is actually a great example. So you could have perhaps someone from Heritage Works, who's been involved in developing a, a report on that. If you worked with Corporate Services i- in advance, those kinds of invitations definitely could be made. Again, it's not, it's not a piece of, it's a municipally-owned property. There's a lot of public ownership, if you will, in that, rather than on a specific land use application.
Okay. Thank you. So Counsel Braithwaite, then Counsel Patterson, and then I'll, maybe once we get through our questions on this, we'll go to the, invite the public to speak. Go ahead, Counsel Braithwaite.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you. So Ms. Varela, if I might, just clarification, so when you talk about someone being able to come and speak to something on the agenda, or be invited to something on the agenda, is there a, can you remind me what the timing is of that? Like, is there a certain number of days before they want to come and, and do that? Or, um, yeah, I just can't remember what the rule is on that.
Go ahead, Ms. Varela.
Uh, so there are agenda guidelines that we've attached as companion documents, not attached, they're companion documents to the procedure by law, that does lay out the, the timelines. I don't have that in front of me, Counsel Braithwaite, but there is a process.
Yeah, thank you. And I, because I, I remember reading it, and, and then in my head, I'm thinking, I was, I remember thinking, gosh, that seems like a, a long time ahead of being able to put in a notification that they wanted to come and speak to something on the agenda. So perhaps that's something we need to look at when we have that in front of us.
Sure. Thank you, Counsel Braithwaite. Ms. Winter?
So just some clarification, if I may. When we're talking about what Counsel Braithwaite just raised, the idea of somebody coming and speaking to an agenda at the, an agenda item that the commission is considering, again, there's some clarity and caution needed, because people will often want to speak if they see that there's a land use application for the house next door to them, and they'll want to come and speak to that at the commission. And that is, what we've just heard is not going to be appropriate, because the time to speak to that is when it's really at a public hearing, or a committee of the whole. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think, I think that's one of the challenges that, you know, both the, the commission and the public, and perhaps even council wrestles with, is that you're putting a group together when you create an advisory body that has a special lens. And that's why you put that body together. So if you have a land use application that may perhaps be in conflict with the value set of that advisory body, you want to hear from the advisory body on that. But your duty as a, as a local elected official is that you would hear a multiple of value sets or stakeholders. So you have to balance a lot of those in your final determinations about land use planning. The advisory body is one piece of that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Counsel Braithwaite?
No, I'm fine, thank you so much.
Counsel Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For clarification on things like statements of significance, members of the community may wish to register or designate their house, and commission members have had knowledge and expertise in giving assistance to develop statements of significance for that end. But then if, if it is for designation, then that would come back to, to council, so that, that would be an application. So what would be, what would be the, the, the things that, that we would have to be aware of, if the commission was working on statements of significance that were then going to be presented to council for, for designation?
I, I think the statements of significance for designations would be a staff process with advice from the commission. I think that's the, so is Mr. Anderson on the phone? Is he able to?
That's what I was just about to say, Your Worship. Uh, Mr. Anderson is on the line and available for questions.
All right, we'll see if this works better than it did on Monday in terms of the, the system here. Mr. Anderson, are you able to, to jump in in terms of what you see as, as a way of, of involving the Heritage Commission on statements of significance? And is there a difference as well, it's my question, between the process for a registered property versus designated property?
Thank you, Worship, members of council. I can be heard, I assume?
You can be heard so clearly, it's like you're in the room.
It's like I'm in the next room. And thank you, Worship. If we can just start with maybe the, the principle of, of adding a property to a heritage register, or designating a property, those are applications. And so those would go through an application process that would include the preparation of a statement of significance as part of that application. And that would be something that staff and, and the commission would, would end up basically agreeing that that's, represents the statement of significance for that application on that property. So that's a process that's similar for both designation and register. When we talk about other types of, of applications, such as a heritage revitalization agreement, for example, that's something where we see often a statement of significance is developed by the heritage consultant for the applicant, submitted as part of the application, again, then reviewed by staff, and also reviewed, and possibly modified through the Heritage Commission review. So we have processes where we, we see this flow through our staff and our, our commission lens on its way for council consideration. So I, I think that's mainly the questions, but if there's something else you need me to add, I, I can certainly do that.
Uh, thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Green.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, and, and through you, Mayor. Just a question for clarity. So in fact, the commission and staff collaborate on those two items, then? On statements of significance around designations and registrations? There, there, there is active collaboration, then? Thank you.
That, that's certainly the way I, I see it, and I think the way we see it as working best, because as has been identified, there's, there's knowledge and expertise in, in the part of the commission. There's the same in terms of crafting those SOSs on the part of staff. And so if we, if we have, if you will, the development and the lens and the final recommendation on a statement of significance through staff and commission, I think we get a pretty good product out of that. So the council's pretty comfortable when they, when they see that registration before them to consider.
Okay, and just a supplemental follow-up question. Do you feel the commission is, is clear about how that works? And the, and I'm, I'm just asking, because is it, is it written down, or is it explicit in, anywhere in writing?
Talk to this.
On, on the collaboration piece? Thank you.
Yeah, I think the answer is not yet. Yeah, that's, that's sort of what we're trying to clarify here, is to make sure that we're all on the same page on, on what should be happening.
So if I can just, if I can just support what Mr. Anderson said, and, and I think this would be an excellent demonstration of, of active partnership, working partnership. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Can I, as one more supplemental on this one? There's, there's two halves of, of heritage registrations and designations. One is the statement of significance, which is a fairly narrow land use, you know, document that, that documents the heritage assets, and provides the, the framework for protection if it's, if it's designated or force-designated, and it uses those to, to kind of identify those heritage assets. But there's a second part of that, which is more sort of some of the, again, the cultural history and the celebration side of that. And is there any possible mechanism in this process whereby that technical being, work being done by the commission, these could be automatically, say, referred to the foundation to go off and work with archives and come back with some, like an appendix that can just sit, not as an official record, but just sit in our, our knowledge base, so that we have some of the stories that attach to it as well? Which are often the things that the people are interested, when they're buying the houses, or, or, or looking as to whether or not it has value, is those stories. And is that mechanism a, a possibility, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Worship, and yes, it is, and yes, it has been, in the practice that, that we, you know, certainly when staff are looking at that, and I'm quite sure when commission members have been working on statements, the, the archives and the resource and, and the, if you will, the note on the social histories, that does occur, that is part of the research. And if I may, that's also part of, of defining heritage values in a statement of significance. You know, the character defining elements often talk about the physical components, but the, the elements of the social history and the significant. components, but the, the elements of the social history and the significance of a property or, or a building, that is part of a statement of significance, and it does form part of the process of ultimately whatever tool recognizes that value of that heritage property.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Are there any other questions on this? And I think this is a good place probably, just given the time. I just want to give people a fair chance to call in and have a conversation as well. Ms. Winter?
I just wonder if we can close this off. Do you have an answer to the question?
I want to, yeah, I want to get a, yeah, I think the, I think, I think we're just getting that clarity now on, in terms of what the roles are, and I think there's comfort with that, with that proposal in terms of what Mr. Anderson is talking about, but I go to the table for any further discussion. Counselor Appleton?
Mayor.
Yes, I'll go to Counselor Appleton and Counselor Braithwaite.
Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. And, and I appreciate going into a little bit more depth on this because I've, I've had some confusion and some concern about the, the various roles surrounding a statement of significance and how a statement of significance should be used. And so it's difficult to, to discuss the, the mechanics of it without making it sound as if there isn't, you know, more than adequate expertise on the commission to contribute substantively to a statement of significance. So I guess I, I want to be clear that, you know, I, I see very clearly that there is expertise to contribute to a statement of significance. But as, as council has heard me raise before, I, I have concerns about the long-term applicability of that statement of significance. So if a statement of significance is created, what subsequent obligations or subsequent, you know, use will it be put to? Does it create an expectation that certain things will be done? So I, I do think that there's, there's the need for the involvement of staff in order to keep things, you know, focused on whatever the land use application at hand is.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that I'm happy to hear of the collaboration for the statements of significance between commission and, and staff or the proposed collaboration, because I do believe that we, we definitely have to tap into that heritage knowledge from the community, and that's a good way to do it, to see them collaborate on something like that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. We have a few more questions to get to in terms of sort of where we see some of these roles, but I think it's an appropriate time, and I'll, I'll just repeat the phone number again, 250-598-3311. That's 250-598-3311. There's a, there's a 30-second or so delay through the web stream that you'll see that, so we can wait for those calls to come in if they're coming in, and we can certainly move forward and, and deal with issues as we're waiting. But I'll give it a minute. Yeah, Ms. Winter?
I was just going to request, Your Worship, when we do have the public comments, if you have the control for that microphone, so you may want it off at that point.
Okay, thank you very much. I can do that.
As I'm back and forth right now. May I also go back to the first question, the question where we started there, have the public input question? Did, did council decide that you would, that generally council is the place for public input, but that the commission would be on, in specific situations, able to seek public input? Did you decide, make a decision there? Or we could, because we went off onto statements of significance?
We have, my, my interpretation of this, and I'll give you my interpretation of what I heard from the table, is that there's a, there's still continued agreement that land use issues have to have the public input at the council table. However, that, that we are supportive of those mechanisms by where there's specialized expertise or knowledge should be available to be invited to those, to those meetings to be heard. Very good. And thank you for calling in to our committee of the whole on Heritage Commission. And if I can just ask that the callers give your, not, not ready yet? Let me know when they're connected? Now? Hello and welcome. If I could just get you to state your name and your municipality of residence, and make sure that your audio on your web stream is turned off before we get going.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Mick Collins, and I'm an Oak Bay resident and taxpayer.
Welcome, Mr. Collins.
I just wanted to pass on a quick comment, and I'll turn it into a question at the end. I'll be brief. I really appreciate the work you're doing to clarify these roles and relationships. I see it as a partnership, a collaboration between three parties, council, staff, and your commissions and committees. And for it to work, there has to be sufficient staff time allocated to these important functions that these committees do. So I think if it isn't already, it should be part of job descriptions, should be part of annual work plans, it should be part of budgets, because this kind of heritage work does not come cheap. A lot of time is spent by the volunteers, but experts have to be called in from time to time and paid. So I would, to pose it as a question, going forward, how far do you see the staff element, the impact on staff workload, et cetera, being part of your deliberations as you work through this? I think you can clarify the work of the committees and commissions, but unless the, the staff are, are working hand in hand with the appropriate resources, however they're dispensed to an independent nonprofit, which the foundation is, for some, for that work, and for the commission to support its work, that's a very, very important question in terms of staff workload, commitment, and, and budget. So those are comments by way of a question, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And I think, I can't give you the specifics because we haven't worked with this long enough to know, but I can tell you that the, the main thrust of the conversation so far has been ensuring that we are adequately staffing and supporting these, the Heritage Commission, because I think that's been an identified gap in the past.
Yeah. But I'd just ask one other question. When I look at all the heritage matters, I see very few graphs of timelines, work, you know, the process. I hear a lot of talking to staff about process. What I don't see is process actually laid out in times, terms of graphs, timelines, who does what when. So just a systematic approach to this important area of the municipality. I see it in other areas, but I, I really don't. If you take a look around, to get clarity on, on who does what and when and how, and that it can be explained to the public, there's a huge job needs to be done there. So I, I really hope you folks can actually get some proper flow diagrams going, because nobody wants to, has the time to spend hours reading endless reports. We need some simple graphics to explain some of this stuff, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I think you're, you're speaking to the converted here on that stuff. I think we, we recognize the need for the clarification of these rules. And frankly, you'll, you'll see more and more what we're doing in our internal council processing. That includes the committees and commissions, is, is that we're actually mapping out into our work plan so that we, we actually have those timelines. It's been the unfortunate reality with, in the past in this community, and it's just the nature of the beast, no blame attached, that we haven't formalized that.
Certainly, I recognize that. Certainly not a blame game. So anyway, I'll hang up now, and I do commend you for taking this so seriously and the quality of thinking and talking that's going on around this right now. And, and also the, the sense of courtesy and civility around this, a passionate area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Good night.
Good night. Is there another caller in the queue?
No other caller.
No other caller. It is not the last chance. I will continue to, to open up the calls, the lines for, for people. Again, the phone number to call is the main municipal line, 250-598-3311. That's 598-3311. And we'll come back to this table and keep going on their last, the remaining questions here. And Ms. Winter? I think you can stay at the table if, if you're comfortable there. There's no...
I'm good at the ta, would you refer me at the table? It's just because I'm writing and taking notes as you talk.
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
I feel like a bit of a jack-in-the-box. Just to finish off on the statements of significance. So what we heard loud and clear was it's a collaboration between staff and the Heritage Commission, and I'm thinking that a guideline or a process laid out would be really helpful for everybody to clarify exactly who does what at what point in the process.
I think that would be extremely helpful, yeah.
Okay, good. We'll put that down for next steps. So a couple of slides back, I think.
We probably had a lot of people at home jumping at that moment.
So this is another one that we heard. I just, I just want to make sure that council has, has heard this, and if you want to have a discussion on it, that the role of the Heritage Commission is to preserve all things heritage in Oak Bay, and the role of the commission is to provide advice to council. So again, two pretty contradictory statements and opinions. So just thought it was important to bring it to council's attention so that you can maybe have some clarity or provide some clarity around that in some future direction.
Counselor Zelka would love to share it.
Go ahead, Counselors Zelka.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you as a staff for going back to this, because I, I was kind of getting lost where we were in the presentation. So thank you so much. We appear to be on slide number 20 at this point, by, by my counting. So with respect to this question, the role of Heritage Commission, when I look very carefully at, at, I guess what's referred to as the operating aspect, with respect to section seven, the application review process, how does this commission in the draft bylaw, like, what is it expected to do and how is it going to do it? And, and, and in some ways, I mean, the way it's worded, about every committee or commission is worded with such specificity that some may refer to it as handcuffs. You can only look at this, and you may only look at it this way, and you can only, you know, a comment on these sorts of things. And I guess that all has to do with the enabling legislation, I'm sure, from staff's perspective. But, but touching on this point about what is it we want for the Heritage Commission, like the role of it, I, I, when I, when I compare section seven, where is it, sections, oh, God, where, just, let me take them while I just find it here. I had it here a second ago. Yeah, section seven to see, in terms of what is it that the commission is, is able to review on the merits of, which is really a brass tacks fundamentally what can this commission do. With respect to, the way the draft thing is written, it basically can only basically comment on heritage conservation area, a development application is related to that, and anything having to do with heritage alteration permits to a large extent, and really nothing else. And for me, that, I find that incredibly restrictive. What, with respect to the role of the commission, I was hoping it would more reflect closer to what's in the official community plan, you know, HR1 in particular. How can this commission provide us advice when we are restricting what they can look at and what they can't look at?
Okay, Counselor Zelka?
I really am...
I'm just gonna, I'll put that as a question to staff. I know you're talking about specifically for the application review process, but I, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll just give that to staff to answer.
I think, I think the easiest way to answer is that council has a prerogative to refer any item it would like its advisory body to provide comment on. You can refer that to your advisory bodies. So again, I don't think the list is meant to be exhaustive. There's certainly standard land use applications related to heritage that the Heritage Commission would weigh in on. But beyond that, for example, if council wanted to undertake review of its heritage plan, council would simply refer that to staff and to the commission. So again, it's, it's about council asking for what it needs to make its governance decision.
Counselor Zelka?
Okay, so with respect to what, the role of the Heritage Commission, I would actually like to see this commission be able to, be enabled to comment on and provide input on any proposed amendment to the official community plan or the zoning bylaw, such as what's made available to the Advisory Planning Commission in their land, the land use aspect of, of the bylaw. It, it, it is referenced essentially in our official community plans where, you know, from, from, from any perspective change to the fabric of the community, because we have such a large lens called heritage, and yet it appears in, in, in these policies that we're trying to restrict it to such a small, small purview. I know our Advisory Planning Commission's land use is, strives to have a heritage representative, but it doesn't have to, and that worries the heck out of me. So I'm hoping we can increase the purview of heritage and give it, so, give it some, some, some meat to that, to that, to that skeletal policy aspect that we mentioned in the OCP.
Thank you, Counselors Zelka. Ms. Morton?
Thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to mention that section seven in the draft bylaw is actually the review process that individual development applications would go through. So that, it's just, that section speaks specifically to that process. Section three is the mandate statement, and I think you'll find that to be a lot more all-encompassing, or more so. So, so when we're talking about the focus and the mandate of the commission, it's really section three that we're focused on, but section seven is if individual development applications come forward, what is the process that those go through when they go through the commission? So I just wanted to mention that.
Well, I, I very much appreciate that. So maybe it's a time for me to sleep. Sorry, I wasn't sure.
Go ahead, Counselors Zelka.
Thank you. A, a final follow-up, if I may. So I, I, I reviewed section three as well, and, and it also feels very hemmed in to, to, to specific types of heritage plans and proposals and things coming forward. I, I, I do note, for example, that other, other municipalities and other cities, such as City of Victoria, they actually sometimes have joint meetings between heritage and land use planning and those sorts of things, and design panels and stuff, with heritage, meeting together to talk about land use. So not that I want to completely duplicate that, but I really like the fact that heritage is, is featured much more broadly on land use in other, in other areas. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can achieve that here at Oak Bay, since we talk so, so, it's not so big about this, but I don't see these current bylaws really reflecting our talk. And I worry about that. If, if I may, one more thing, one more thing? Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I wonder out loud whether the Advisory Planning Commission land use would benefit from cross-pollination from this Heritage Commission. In other words, someone from this commission would be the heritage rep over on advisory planning land use.
Oh, that's entirely...
As, as a, as a possible idea.
Well, it's entirely up to council if that's the desire of council to, to cross-pollinate like that, absolutely. It's not written into the requirements at this point of the, but those are generally kept a little broad, just because sometimes you can't find people to fill specifics if you, if you make it too specific. Is there any other, just in the, on the point previous, there is a mandate there. It says including, it's not intended to be, you know, totally inclusive. Is there any, actually, maybe I'll just go back to Counselors Zelka. I'm not entirely clear on, and maybe just step away from your mic a maybe half an inch, because you're coming through very loud in this room. It's hard for us to adjust the volume. But is there a, is there anything specific? You just said, expressed some concerns about the narrowness. Is there something, we've had a ranging conversation here, and, and we're just trying to capture the, the intent. Is there something specific in the, in the, in the allowance that you're feeling this is too restrictive on currently, that you can be as specific as possible to give guidance to staff?
Well, yeah. So with respect to the role of the Heritage Commission, I would love the Heritage Commission to be able to comment somehow, either directly or through the Advisory Planning Land Use, on any change to zoning and any change to the official community plan, whether, whether we, whether it has the word heritage in it or not, because of the, because of, of the lens that, that we, we are giving to the heritage aspect.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Zelka.
That's what I was hoping for.
Ms. Verella, did you have a?
Thank you, Your Worship. So again, council has the ability to refer any item to any of its advisory bodies. It could also refer an item to multiple advisory bodies. So Counselor Zelka talked about the idea of perhaps both...
So Counselor Zelka talked about the idea of perhaps both the Heritage Commission and the APC may look at a single item. If council decided that it would benefit from multiple perspectives, it could absolutely do that through the referral process. What we're trying to streamline is that the advisory bodies don't refer matters to each other, because that leaves council out of the loop. And again, these bodies exist to provide advice to council, so it's council who needs to decide what advice it wants. It can refer as it sees appropriate.
Just a follow-up to Counselor Zelka's point, is there anything precluding us in these bylaws? Should council wish to have a joint meeting of heritage and APC to have them together?
No, staff intentionally made sure that council could absolutely combine a meeting, refer an item to multiple bodies, however council wanted to do it. The point was, it was supposed to be a directive from council.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rela. Counselors Zelka, does that adequately address your thoughts or concerns?
It mostly does. It was, I guess, commenting, echoing the comments from the member of the public who just spoke recently, if there was a diagram that would show a general process that one of these things would follow through, such as what was drawn up for the heritage conservation areas process, that would help a lot. But it also sounds like, from what our CAO is suggesting, is that council must always be on our toes, and if we think something is going to benefit them, then we have to refer it. It won't automatically go to one or automatically go to the other, or sorry, I meant to go to both. So we basically have to always refer ourselves every single time if we think it's going to go forward. Is that what I heard the CAO suggest?
I think, anything in Section 7 gets automatically referred? Anything else would be referred, Ms. Rela?
Just to clarify that if there is a land use application with heritage value, it usually goes to both the APC and the Heritage Commission, and perhaps Director Anderson could provide additional comment.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Worship, members of council. Yeah, maybe just to give Counselors Zelka some comfort on that, if in fact we have an application, say for rezoning, and as part of that initial application review, we identify that there are heritage elements or features of that, that would be referred both to the Advisory Planning Commission land use, but also to the Heritage Commission for comment. So that is a practice that we've had in place, to my knowledge, for a few years here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
It would be helpful, if you don't mind, Chair, if at some point it could be pointed out where in the bylaw it actually says that, or if there was a diagram that could show that, because I can't, I can't find it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave that alone, just because we don't want to start wordsmithing bylaws at this table. We just want to get the context, and I have counselor, I think, was it, oh no, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. In looking at the existing bylaw and the proposed bylaw, I just would like to understand more clearly how the commission will still foster heritage awareness and provide leadership in heritage initiatives, and advise council on any matter related to the heritage significance of buildings or structures or landscape features within the municipality. That was in the, that's in the existing bylaw. I think some of that, you know, I still support. So would, how will that be managed going forward? Is that in the work plans? Is there still an intent to have the Heritage Commission, in fact, foster heritage awareness and promote and provide leadership in heritage initiatives?
I think, what I've heard so far is no, that that would be.
The education and awareness piece, yeah, no. That's foundation. But the leadership and initiatives would come from the work plans and other matters or anything as referred by council.
Right, so just for process clarity, the Heritage Commission, if there's something that they see as a significant issue for council's awareness, they can have a motion at the table to bring that to council's attention and/or ask us to refer, yes?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would have to happen. Counselor Appleton, and then Green.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think that this speaks to, I think that it speaks to a responsibility of council. I see that there's sort of an abiding concern about the commission, not just this commission, but other commissions as well, being given enough to do and being actively involved in the process. Because of the restructuring and because of the structures that have been created through the new procedure bylaw and the terms of reference for the bodies, it does create an incumbency on council to consider where things should be referred to those bodies where necessary. So it, we are saying that these bodies shall consider those things referred to by council. I think it's incumbent on us as a group to ensure that we do refer those things, which should be referred. So I think it is a bit of a different process than it was, than it has been historically. I think something that we would have to cast our minds to more, I guess, in a more focused way, at least as this rolls out and until we get used to that new process. But certainly having been liaison to the APC and having sat on the APC, that's been a recurrent comment from them as well, is that, you know, those items, we understand that we will work on those items referred to, referred from council. We would like to have items referred from council. So I think that that's something for us to keep in mind.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton, and I think also important for us is, that process allows for our consideration of staff time and workload and things as well, because I think if we're all working together, council, staff, and our commissions, then there is an impact on all three, where we're tackling some of these projects. So I think that's a really important piece, is we do have to refer them, and it gives us that frame. Counselor Green?
Just, I just wanted to comment, and I also have a question. On these two bullets, what we heard, I don't see those as mutually exclusive, but I do see them, or they're requiring some clarification. I think, I'll speak for myself as a council member, I would, I value the role of the commission in advising me on all heritage-related matters that are important to the community and to council, and so I see, I see the role as combining those two. I don't think it is the job of the commission to preserve, that's an active verb, that's not their role, or, excuse me, or to conserve, but they can provide advice on all matters related to best practices around heritage conservation and preservation.
And my question on the referral issue that Counselor Appleton was articulating, and I agree with him, what is, what is the relationship between the referral process from council to a commission and then the referral process from staff? Are they different, or do they, how do they relate to each other?
Sure, I might go to Mr. Anderson on this one, just because I think it ties into the land use application process. Mr. Anderson, can you provide some clarity on the referral process?
Apologize, Your Worship, members of council. Maybe just, if I could hear again the question on the referral, if I may, an application...
I think the question was, where does the staff refer things to the Heritage Commission versus where would the council step in to refer things to the commission? Where is it automated, and where would it come to council first?
Well, I guess if we use an example of a rezoning, that, let's say staff does not, as part of the processing, refer that to the Advisory Planning, or to the Heritage Commission, sorry, and then it goes to council, and at that point, council determines that, no, perhaps this needs to have a Heritage Commission review of it, then council would refer that as part of your deliberation on, I guess, the staff report on the application. So that's an example, I guess, of an application where council could determine that it also needs Heritage Commission, and staff may not have done that. That's an example, but...
Is there, is it only the items referred to in the bylaw, the established bylaw, that get done automatically, like the heritage conservation area, heritage revitalization agreement type pieces? Those are the only two that absolutely go every time?
Yeah, thank you. That probably does help me to understand the question a little bit better, that, yeah, certainly, any of the applications received that would fall into the heritage category, heritage alteration permits, or register, or designation, or revitalization agreements, those are all going to automatically go to the Heritage Commission. And then similarly, if we have a rezoning and there isn't a heritage element, that would just automatically go to the Planning Commission. I think maybe in respect to the larger question of, when would council decide that perhaps this needs to be looked at by more than one of the commissions, or possibly looked at in a joint category? That's something that, again, I think I've seen occur when it gets to that first council juncture, and there's a determination that perhaps there'd be some benefit to looking at this from those different advisory body lenses, and then we're directed to take that either to a joint or to back to one of the, or to one of the commissions that hadn't seen it prior. So they're not that usual. I guess what I'm saying is that on most of these applications, they're kind of clearly, they run, if they're rezonings, through the Advisory Planning Commission with no heritage elements. If they're heritage applications, they run through the Heritage Commission. They're relatively straightforward for the most part. That's my perspective on them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Green?
Yeah, just a comment, and thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, that helps clarify. But there are incidents when we might not know, and staff might not know about the heritage or history or significance of a certain property, and that's when the commission can be very much a proactive resource to trigger or give us a heads up about, well, hang on, wait a minute, this property, you know, is significant. So I'm just, is that still possible for the commission to do in this new model?
I'm not sure of the answer to that. I'm trying to think of where that trigger would come.
So this is property that isn't on the registry, it isn't designated, it doesn't require a statement of significance? I'm just trying to figure out what the example is that you're thinking of, Counselor Green, sorry.
What about 785 Island Road? So that wasn't registered, that wasn't designated, but it came forward for demolition.
Cool. Your Worship, if I may speak to that?
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Oh, thank you, Bruce. Mr. Anderson?
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson. Yes.
So, if I may, I mean, that's an example of a property that actually had and was in a process prior to the demolition permit. It was in a heritage revitalization agreement and subdivision-related process, so the heritage values had been identified, that had actually gone to the Heritage Commission for consideration. Subsequent to that application being withdrawn, it then came forward as a demolition permit and came to council as a consideration of a temporary protection order. And of course, we may recall that in times of that phase of COVID, we were not in a position to have our commissions meet, if I recall. But I guess that's one where we knew full well that that had heritage value as a property from the previous process that had been in place and withdrawn.
So, Mr. Anderson, that house was in the, at least in the More Than Bricks and Boards book by Stuart Stark, which was commissioned, and I believe that recognition in there is enough for it to be triggered if there's a demolition, is that correct?
Yes, and I say that because it is basically, is there heritage value determined or deemed for that property? If so, then that, my responsibility is to move that to council for consideration of temporary protection order, which is what we've done in the past. So, yes, it's just the broad determination of, is there heritage value potential there from the district's perspective? Then we take the appropriate actions to consider protection.
So in the model contemplated here, if there's anything outside of the, those tools that have previously existed, they wouldn't automatically trigger it? I guess one of the things that we have the opportunity to do as a council, or the Heritage Commission can undertake themselves with the request to council, is to update our list of heritage-recognized assets in a way that, because that is the tool really that we use to trigger the more official processes. Is that fair, Mr. Anderson?
I was going to wait for you to ask, and I would say absolutely.
Okay, there we go. I asked to answer, there we go. I just, I think that's, I think, Counselor Green, you raise a really important point, is if these are not recognized already, then the process is much more complicated. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to support the Heritage Commission and even maybe the foundation, in some ways, to, the foundation probably to get people to raise awareness and draw people in, and the commission to do the evaluation and the additions. And again, I'll point out in the past, as we've done these kinds of work, both the heritage plan, the Stuart Stark book, those were initiated by the Heritage Commission, funded by council, and a consultant was used to help develop those. And I think that's a process that's totally appropriate for us to reconsider if we want to look at those. Go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I've made this statement before, but I will make it again tonight at this meeting. Out of the provincial workshops that were held, the one message that came across loud and clear, and they said it pretty well at every public meeting that we had, so it bears repeating, that passionate volunteers are the leaders in creating and maintaining heritage programs throughout the province. Creating and supporting effective committees is critical to ensuring successful heritage programs. I don't, you know, I don't necessarily read all of that into the proposed bylaw, but I understand that this, you know, we could probably be wordsmithing forever and maybe, you know, not get that comfort. And so perhaps this will be, I will look at this as a work in progress that would be implemented, and I think we've all admitted here at the council table tonight, that the Heritage Commission has not felt the value that we would like them to feel, and so it's kind of a work in progress. But I think that, you know, if we go forward with the bylaw as it is written, then perhaps there will be an opportunity to revisit this, reevaluate it once it's implemented, and ensure that it is in fact, ensuring the successful heritage programs that, you know, we've enjoyed for many years with our volunteers.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Any other discussion on this? Thank you.
Okay, so the answer that I heard is it's to provide advice on all things, on things heritage in Oak Bay, not necessarily actively do the preserving.
Not preserving, but I think Counselor Green's point was excellent, in that they help, they help, you know, reinforce to council, all successive councils, the importance and the knowledge.
Okay, so the next slide. We're moving in, sorry, next slide. And the next one, we've done this one, we don't really need to revisit this one again. And you've touched on this one already, I think, Counselor Patterson, you raised it. Sorry, the next one. There we go. Conduct regular evaluation, identify areas for change or focus, and that is in, the new policy does, as we've discussed, does provide. So I think that, and also that there's a role for the council liaison to play in supporting that. So I think, I'm not sure unless there is more discussion needed, I think that one's pretty much a given. Yeah? You okay with that one, Your Worship?
And I think, I think that does not have to be, I mean, there'll be a more formal point of that, but again, if things aren't working, then we can bring that back and consider how to address those, even temporarily until we can do more formal changes. And if things are working really well, it's good to know that as well. So I think, I think that's really an important part of that, of that role, Counselor Appleton. That rule, Counselor Appleton, yeah.
And you've also come up with suggestions tonight that we can just review when we look at next steps, right? Because I think that will some of those will inform an evaluation process, too.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Commission versus Foundation. Um, I think it was you, Counselor Green, who said this one already. You didn't say did you, did you say party? I think you said fun, but what what I heard was policy versus party. Um, and is this where we've quite discussed this about, we've discussed this matter already this this evening. Um, do we think that this this is an is is an issue for, you know, is it not as, is it that the foundation is perceived as fun and the commission is perceived as drudgery, or is it that they're different people who should be attracted? Um, so that's what I mean when I say, is this an issue? Or is it a starting point for clarity of role between the two?
I'll go to the originator of this comment. Is it Counselor Green?
I hate the word drudgery. I, you know, I don't think it's an issue. I I think these two bodies have worked a long time together supporting each other, complementing each other's work. I know there's been some, been some confusion about roles and responsibilities, mandate, et cetera, but um they really help each other. They support each other. Um, yes, there are some members that belong to both bodies, but I think it's our responsibility to clarify our expectations um of the commission around policy work and it's our um, and the Heritage Foundation really has an arm's length, as the mayor pointed pointed out, an arm-length responsibility. So I'm not sure it's an issue. I think if we're clear about what we want from the commission, I think that addresses it. But again, I'm only one person. I I don't know how others feel.
And we we did say already that the the education and awareness piece will stay out of the new, the proposed bylaw, the new.
That's the direction we're heading right now, I guess. Uh, any other comments on this particular piece? Counselor Appleton?
Uh, thank you, worship. I I guess I would say that I'm I'm trying to, I'm I'm respecting and I'm acknowledging the comments that the members, you know, that that all the, from all the correspondents that we've received about, you know, the concern about loss of heritage, the concern about just the the exigency, I guess, of the heritage preservation piece. And so I think that some of this discussion about what role specifically the Heritage Foundation plays um is actually a bit of a conversation that that is is going to happen in the community and amongst the folks in the community that are interested in the topic, as in what uh, whether or not there is an interest uh and and a motivation to take on a more active role in, again, small A advocacy uh, that reflects their their concerns about the the nature of the the nature of what's happening in the district. So I I I think some of this is is a conversation that actually is is the communities to have as well about what structures and what avenues uh, those folks want to put that message forward to council. And so if 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 individuals are feeling that the commission, because of its nature and because of how it has to be administered, is is restricting in that regard, um, that's a a larger conversation about how that gets communicated. If if folks in the in in the community who are focused on heritage are feeling very concerned indeed about the the direction of heritage, well, we need to hear that. It may not be able to come through the commission by by its nature, but there there should, there should be reflection done on on how that's communicated to council. So I think we're wrestling a little bit here with with uh wanting to be respectful of people's concerns, legitimate concerns about heritage. Uh, some of this may exist outside of uh avenues and structures that we can directly provide for them as a district.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Counselor Green again?
I'm sorry to keep, um, but I do have a question, though, and it was something um that we just referenced that we're removing public education and awareness from the commission's bylaw. But how do we define that? Because um I'm not really clear on on what that constitutes exactly and the differences between the Foundation and the Commission.
Okay.
Because because there is a level of awareness and a level of education that the commission provides by virtue of how it advises us and and how it works with staff. So I'm just wondering, I think we have to be careful that we that that we don't um I, because I think there is some role for education and awareness in that specific way, but.
So, ma- if I may, your worship, so what I was hearing was that there was confusion and overlap because there were certain initiatives that maybe the commission would would take on that were, they they, I don't, this is not a a specific example, but maybe the commission was running a lecture series, but then the foundation would run a lecture series. So those, it, you're absolutely right, Counselor Green. There's always going to be a role of the Heritage Commission to, because they're an advisory body, of course, they're going to be providing education and awareness and advice to council, right? But it's that running specific education and awareness programs and activities and initiatives in the community. That's what I, that's what I heard, and that's what I'm trying to reflect back when I say that.
So for cl- for sake of clarity and and total understanding, maybe we should be using that that word program, only because otherwise if we don't clarify what we mean by education and awareness, because those are processes that that are quite general in in how we've referenced them. So I think we should be explicit about what we mean around around those two pieces.
Thank you, Counselor Green. I think we're bumping up right up against a couple of core things that that are, you know, really fundamental to the establishment regulations that we have on our commissions versus the the flexibility of foundations. And two things come to my mind. I'm just gonna ask these questions. One, um, well, one, uh, some of the lack of clarity here is that the commission actually provides funds to the foundation currently, which I think has to go because that creates an enormous amount of confusion. And we have to, I think they, there's a, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a structure there. The commission has a, has a budget and the foundation has a budget. And I think if it's just, if we're just clear that we're properly funding the foundation for their, all their activities, then that's that, that interleaving part is probably not necessary. Um, I think the makeup of the found, I guess the other part of this is the, is comes after the, to the fundamental makeup of the, I don't know, are we gonna talk about the makeup as well of the?
Right there. There you go.
Okay, 'cause I think this is actually relates to the first one, because if if one of the lack of clarity is that the same, a a large percentage of the of the groups meet together, but not all. So I, my experience, when I was liaison, the same items would get repeated, you know, five or six times, you know, or twice, once someone meeting one and the other, but it would be, it would take up fifteen or twenty minutes of repeat. So the two people who weren't the same got new information, but the otherbody else heard it twice. Um, which is not the issue. The issue is if people on the foundation are expressing opinions on land use issues um, related to education or other aspects, and then they come back to the foundation or to the commission in that role, that's very confusing uh for them. It seems like we almost need to have uh, a hundred percent of the same for both, or we need to have, or we can just be very clear, you don't talk about land use in this one and you do in this meeting. Or we at least ensure there's not a quorum of the foundation or of the commission on the foundation uh and have that perception of the same meeting happening twice. Uh, 'cause I think, I think that structure actually informs the lack of clarity on the on the party versus policy piece, 'cause this, when the same people are kind of meeting together but not really, it's really gets confusing. And it just devolves over time. I think with, if that a lot of work by the liaison and staff to to bring it back into the form.
Aren't there six members in common right now? Heritage Commission members on the foundation?
Something like that, yeah. Yeah, it's a pretty significant number. And I don't yeah. So I think, I think these are just fundamentally, from a, from an appointment perspective, we have to wrestle with this because there's there's a risk here, either there, again, we can clarify the roles to a certain degree, but I think the actual appointments themselves are 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 gonna be an issue long term if we're not very careful about how we're managing it. And that's not really in the bylaw. That's more in the, I guess, a policy piece, but it it may have to be addressed through that policy, not through the bylaw. Go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think, I think it was a recommendation of the chairs of the commission and the foundation that two members be be um, merge, like, two of the members of the Heritage Foundation be on the commission or vice versa. And so then that would then you wouldn't get into that problem. Although the difficulty is you you still can get into discussions. And so they're they're, I I think it's really the role of the uh council liaison, too, to keep saying, well, that 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 is a development application and we shouldn't be discussed, you know, so it it it's it's, and it's part of the education piece. And this is where I really think that the Heritage Commission has a a dynamic role to play in the community, educating the community about uh, the legislative um responsibilities of heritage and what you can do and what you can't do. Whereas the Heritage Foundation speaks more to the heritage in Oak Bay and how the community values certain aspects of features in Oak Bay. So it, in my mind, it's quite a different um responsibility for each of those bodies.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson.
So do you, do you want a further discussion, your worship, on the membership and what that looks like? Do you want to determine that tonight? Or do you want to put it out there for future consideration?
I I'd just like to hear, enough to hit the pros and cons on the table, so we're we're not sort of we don't have to start from scratch next time we have this conversation about the things, 'cause we have to start appointing soon. So I just want to be a uh, as I said, before I go back to second time speakers, Counselor Braithwaite or Zelka, uh, we've covered two sort of pieces on this, the party versus policy and the makeup of the of the bodies. Uh, do you have any comments on either of those two? I'm not hearing.
Counselor Braithwaite, no, I'm, I'm, I think I'm just in agreement with the things I've heard around the table. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Counselor Zelka, anything to add?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I'm in general agreement. Um, I mean, the, I I I appreciated Seth uh mentioning that uh, that 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 items that are, whatever heritage is defined, it adds, adds, will make it to to both to both the land use and also heritage. Um, but I I I'm in terms of makeup, I I I'm very interested in in a possible cross pollination or or finding some way that um, instead of, I mean, maybe there's, there's a, a way of making things more efficient and less staff work if um a member of of the land use APC could be on heritage, a member of heritage could be on uh APC land use, um, and and provide a bit of a liaison process that way. Uh, it's just, again, it's just ideas, trying to minimize time, maximize efficiencies.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Zelka. Are there any other discussions here at this table? Okay, I think we've, I guess we're not gonna resolve the the makeup at this point, um, and I think that's fine.
Is it fair to say generally that you're looking at narrowing the numbers of members in common between the commission and the foundation? Is that what I'm hearing? That's what I've been hearing this evening. And in the community, too.
Yeah.
Be honest.
So fewer people that overlap between the commission and the foundation, yes.
And one other point to make, too, is I think the role of the liaison could be really important if somebody said, I think it was Counselor Patterson, that, you know, you shouldn't be discussing land use matters at the foundation, even though it's coming up, right? But I think maybe then is there a council liaison appointed to the foundation?
There is.
Because I think that it puts pressure on the liaison, but I think that that's, that's a good piece for helping them learn and understand their roles, and that helps eliminate some confusion, too.
No, it's a, it's a very important role in that, in that front, for sure, so.
Okay, so.
So can I just, can I just raise as a flag, just so it's on the record here as well? One of the concerns that I think is a very legitimate one uh of the Heritage Foundation, sorry, of the Heritage Commission, is that, you know, if we're talking because th- these are land use issues and and Oak Bay being Oak Bay, there isn't, as much as we like to say, there's a lot going on, there's not that much going on. And so there's a risk of a of a of a commission alone who's only dealing with land use things not having enough work to do and and feeling underwhelmed and unchallenged and not not keeping their their interest. Um, because as much as people don't like being overworked, they really like being underworked uh and feeling like they're they're volunteering for nothing. And I, and it's one of the big frustrations I've heard from I think from council, frankly, when we were not meeting as often and from all of the commissions and committees uh during this time, was that people are like, I'm a volunteer, let me do something. And so I think at the back of my mind, I'm as much as I want to separate those two, I also want to make sure that there's a I think we're gonna have to really carefully watch this to ensure that there's either, you know, a fe- a reasonably quick feedback loop to to self motivate activities they can undertake, uh, or uh, or just monitor the number of land use pieces that are going, 'cause I would hate for there to be six or eight months where nothing gets referred, similar to the problem to the to the Planning Commission had. And then they feel like they're not, they're underappreciated, under, underutilized, and their expertise is not being, not being fully used. So I thought that's that's part of the context here is, is yes, it's good to separate them. Yes, it's also good to keep them both really busy. And the foundation doesn't have a problem being busy, 'cause they're doing activities. Um, the commission is different, particularly right now. So, Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, worship. And I would just like to acknowledge, as the newly appointed liaison, I'd I'd I just want to say that I I recognize in in my role that this is going to be, I I guess, for want of a better word, an atypical year, or that, you know, the rollout year will require a fair amount of iterative pro- iterative process support and and a lot of of fe- entertaining feedback from the members of the commission. So I guess from my perspective, I'm I'm ready for that. I expect that. Uh, and so I, for uh just an- announce that intention as liaison to be, I guess, that 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 extra degree available as we kind of roll this out, because I know that there will be some uh, some crunchy spots.
Crunchy spots, indeed. And I think one of the things that we can do to help, frankly, is is the education piece. If we're actually investing in education for the members and we're asking them to attend those those sessions, then that will be time that they need to get to build their skills to to be up to spe- up to speed and and provide the value that that we expect of them as well. So it's not, I think, the first year, we can at least help with that, as we sort of help wrap them up as well. So, thank you.
There we go. We're almost done.
What?
So I I hope, well, it's a little, little bit.
Uh, just a little bit, um, longer than I I sort of thought, but um, I just want to sum up and talk about next steps. Um, you had a lot of um broad and aspirational statements at the beginning, and one of them's fallen off the wall, but I think we've touched in, we we then sort of started big and then started to narrow it down. So some themes have come out um, that 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 I've heard. Um, just to confirm that the Heritage Commission is a council advisory body, that it provides advice to council on heritage matters in a variety of ways, in land use applications and in matters referred by council and.
Yes, that's definitely what I heard. I just also want to
Someone behind me?
Nope, I just, I just, Ms., I'm gonna make another ask. If anybody wishes to call in, this is sort of the last chance they have to do so. Uh, so if anybody's watching and they still want to have some comments, you've heard a lot of the debate, you've heard a lot of debate, but discussion, uh contemplation around the table. Um, and you've heard some of the general guidelines that we provided to staff at this point. So um, if there's any additional comments, uh, please, this is a chance to talk to us as a council in a relatively informal setting uh before we kind of give direction to go away and come back with some more formalized pieces to contemplate. Uh, the number is, again, two five zero five nine eight thirty-three eleven, five nine eight three three one one. And we'll just, what I'll do, Ms. Williams, if you can just wave at me if anybody calls in, then I'll just stop what we're doing. We'll go directly to the call. We'll come back to our our consideration as we walk through these. So thank you very much. Go ahead, Ms. Winter.
So confirmation that you see, that that council sees that the Heritage Commission is a council advisory body that provides advice to council and through referrals from council, but council always also encourages the uh, the commission to um develop an annual work plan, but that the work plan um should tie in with the the district's planning timelines, so that there's more of a chance of it being tied in with council priorities and resourced and that, and that sort of thing. So that's, that's one of the things that I've heard. I've also, what's been a theme through the evening is that communications and clarity are critical. Um, so for example, a number of things that I think were upsetting maybe members of the commission and members of the public to do with the proposed uh new bylaw for the Heritage Commission actually were addressed in the counts, in the commission and committee policy. And now it's on there, are in the procedure bylaw. And so it's it's an opportunity to do some communication, to communicating. And along those lines, of course, we've talked about orientations for the commission. Um, and and a couple of ideas for guidelines, additional guidelines that might provide clarity in terms of process and that sort of thing. Um, if you wanted to, um, there, there is a, an opportunity, possibly if council feels at the need for a further workshop or a session.
possibly if council feels the need for a further workshop or a session with staff on land use processes in more depth. So there's a there's an opportunity for some clarity and that helps educate the community too. Um work plans, the feedback loop, that's important too, and that you want the commission and the and the foundation to be fairly separate, to avoid overlap in role. And one of the ways to do that will probably be to restrict membership in common between the two. That's a bunch of pretty good work, actually.
I don't, uh I just, most of them had nods, but there was a couple of not so sure on the last one. Uh so, Counselor, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, Counselor Green, if you don't wanna talk, but is there anything about that last comment about trying to limit the overlap?
I'm not sort of currently involved with the commission, so I I I don't know what their feelings or thoughts are. Counselor Patterson, can you clarify how they feel about that? Are are they asking for a sort of limitation to overlapping membership? Would that be helpful?
Thank you. Uh I think that that um there was eh a distinct identification on both the commission and the foundation that they needed to do recruitment. There has been um some changes in um the directors on the foundation, so that process has started. The commission has been more limited because of just this process we've been going through on council. Um but eh the the foundation has often been a good place for kind of the starting ground for some of those people. The foundation members are are very much focused on on different purposes than than the commission is. And so I think there the the commission would would really like to have a a change in in how its structure is is set up and and some of the the more involved pieces of education that they have to do relative to land planning. So yes, it would be good to be able to recruit independently for the two.
Thank you. I I really appreciate that. I know one of the things that has been an ongoing issue for the commission for years, and it may be for the foundation, is succession planning. So it's a real worry, and I think that's partly why we've had had the duplication of membership between the two bodies is that we just haven't had new people come forward. It's it's been really tough to recruit, so that was probably why that sort of evolved that way.
Thank you. And can I just get clarification? I noticed in the in the cheat sheet here, uh it talks about the same two-year appointment essentially as we've had in the past, but there's no mention of it being staggered. So half one year, half the other. Is the intention in the mind of uh of staff to that that would end and we would just do a recruitment every two years? Or that we would move to a staggered once this uh this starts here?
Uh so, thank you, your worship. We were just speaking about that the other day, actually. So um the idea is uh when we go, so the when you do your appointments this year, they would all um end at the end of December of next year. Uh and then we would be posting initially in the policy, we thought for two for two-year terms. But we had discussed that earlier and and um the benefits of staggering terms. So we'll probably, we've popped that in for review uh when we come back to, I guess, probably late, well, summer or fall on the review of the policy. We'll probably be recommending something different on that, just so there is that overlap.
Okay, so we're doing one year right now for everybody. In any case, we're not doing a mix of two year and one year on this.
Correct. And uh the reason that Ms. Hawkins and I had discussed that was so that you don't have a major recruitment that falls on the same year as municipal election. Uh but but I think we can find a happy place somewhere in between. So some would stagger uh and then some might be shorter terms, some longer terms, but we will we will look at that when we bring that policy back to you with recommendations for um improvements.
Okay, thank you. If I might also add somewhere in those little notes, um maybe we can do the recruitment a little earlier in the year so that we're not sort of scrambling in in late, late year to to make those appointments. And and that would also dovetail maybe with the election that we could deal with those appointments even before the election happened in October, if that was possible. So those are just things that I think would benefit uh the community as a whole. People would have had yeah, sometime in September or something and 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 bring that forward. Might be might be useful if we can. And I know it might be difficult. Uh but if that's possible. Um okay, back to you, Ms. Winter.
Thank you, your worship. So I guess one one big question was, does council wish staff to rework specifically section three of the proposed bylaw to reflect some of what you've discussed, to reflect what you've discussed tonight, clarify the role of the commission as a as an advisory body? Um maybe um, you know, being providing a little bit more clarity if possible, if feasible, um on the sort of the self-initiating bit and the and some of the work that's not specifically related to land use matters. Because again, observation, I think people read section three and the first two or three bullets were were all about land use applications, and that was kind of made people sad.
I think it's worth rewording it in a way that reflects the broader the broader piece and 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 the ability within that to to identify and bring forward to councils priorities, process um uh items of importance. I think I think it'd be very worthwhile. Thank you. Counselor Appleton?
Uh thank you, your worship. Just briefly, and I I think staff will probably recognize this anyway, but I just the there are implications also for section eight in reporting to council because it references back to section three one C and three one D and it is kind of contemplates that circular process. I know staff will have already recognized uh that maybe tweaking that language a little bit too to to reflect some of the discussion, but I figured at this point about.
Thank you. I don't see any. Go ahead, Counselor Zelka.
Uh, Counselor Zelka?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh uh section three B, it would um eh eh I would love to see it if it could be um a little explain a little bit more about how um the development applications related to heritage make it uh to this commission. Um uh it 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 wasn't obvious to me uh of that uh the the process is going forward. So I would just love it to be a a really read it a little bit more obvious for for those of us like me who don't quite get it in terms of how how uh development applications actually get here. Thank you.
I'll uh I think if we can make it clearer, that would be helpful. I don't know if that's possible in the bylaw or in other aspects, so I'll just leave that with staff as to to take away
Thank you.
to consider. Yeah, my yeah, so I hear I hear staff talking about maybe doing a little flow chart or something in the background. I can that could accompany this to kind of give some explanations, so. Uh you're and I think it ties back to better communications and clarity of processes helpful. I don't see anything else? Okay. Ms. Winter, anything? Is that the last question you had?
That was it. Thank you. I think if you're if you feel that you've been able to come to some good conclusions and provide direction, then um it's been a good evening. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Williams, is there any other phone calls that have come in in that timeframe?
No, your worship, no calls.
Okay. I was anticipating more. That was all. I just wanna make sure that we uh I though I I will say uh the the depth of uh of of writing and I I always appreciate people's written so written submissions. It gives us time to read, think, contemplate, uh et cetera. And I I I think it's if I don't, I I think it's worth noting, one thing we didn't touch on it again, cuz we made it pretty clear about the question around um public participation. And I just I want, cuz there was a a letter that was sort of signed by a whole bunch of people saying, we really wanna have this. Eh just, this is in the really, I believe, the best practices around land use pieces. And and just to contemplate what happens with an aggressive developer who wants to bring fifty friends to a Heritage Commission meeting to explain how much they support it is just as likely as having, you know, five people show with some particular knowledge on a topic that that they they're interested in. And I think it's important that we need a place for that. That's thus the public hearing, if it's a public hearing or other places we have in our new procedures bylaw. It's not at the commission level cuz I think we're asking a lot of our volunteers to stand up, do the training, provide their advice and and do that. They're not the ones held accountable for the decision-making. We are, we get voted in and out on on a regular basis. And I think it's important that that responsibility sit with us, that that public consult, the broader public consultation sit with us. It's not to take it away from the commission. It's there to to ensure that the investments we make in that are not ruined by by complicating that process or or providing undue influence at the wrong level. That's that's our job to take that, to be held accountable for it. So I just wanna address that because I think I understand the 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 desire for it. It feels so good to have that. Um but a lot of thought has gone into this to make sure that when we're contemplating these things, that it's sitting at the right place in our process and the right bodies are held accountable for that. So I just didn't wanna leave that cuz we really hadn't talked about it in any kind of depth as to why we're kind of making that piece forward. So that's all I wanted to add. Anything else uh that people feel still need some clarification, either staff or members of this committee? Not seeing any. Uh, Counselor Zelka or Braithwaite, anything else before we uh we call an end to this meeting?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Um I think that 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 wraps us up. I just I also wanna just express my appreciation. This has been one that we've had agreement in principle, and then it's come back and forth and back and forth as we've tried to really address the concerns, legitimate concerns addressed by the by committee and foundation members and and really wanna make sure that we're not doing anything that harms heritage in this process. Um but bring us more into alignment with with best practices and and how we wanna move things forward. So I I think we're close to getting it right. I have I suspect we're gonna have to come back and tweak this uh at the end of the year to kind of address the things that we learned that worked and didn't work. Um but I'm very appreciative of of the staff work that's gone into this, which is enormous. And and of the committee, frankly, for the amount of time and thought that's gone into this as well cuz it's uh it's not light work to go and read all these materials, so and and the input. So thank you for all that time. Uh we're not making any decisions tonight. This is just for staff to go away and incorporate our recommendations. And um so with that, I think we'll just take a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. Thank you. Uh any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Uh, Counselor Zelka?
In favor.
Counselor Braithwaite?
In favor.
All right, very good. You would have been outvoted anyway, I think. So that calls a conclusion our evening. Thank you very much, everyone, and we will see you all in twenty twenty-one. May it be a better year.
Yes, and uh Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Oh, uh, Counselor Braithwaite and Zelka, I actually I'll I'll drop them off. I have cards for you. I left them in the cubbies. Um, do you want?
Oh, thank you. Uh, I'm fine to come by the hall tomorrow. Thank you.